May I hear from any guy?
Whoever with Karen's phone.
Karen's not coming. Karen's not coming?
Okay, well, bottom line, um, I'm just asking other circumstances that I would just give us all things.
Yeah, I'm already, it's what I like said, Kim's not definitely.
I've always had some private stuff that very easily. Okay. Yeah. We missed that one by schedule this week. So my plan was to state your proposition here. That site inspection. It looks like you're going to barely have a quorum still.
If we. If we want to be.
Okay, so sorry about that.
Not okay, that's fine.
Seriously, if you hadn't done that side inspection, I would have just.
No, I'm not proud, not proud. That's not, not, thank you, I appreciate it.
Welcome, everybody, sorry, a few minutes late here. Um, I think, um, what we're going to do normally, what we have in the beginning of these meetings is about a half hour of going over some things, either a study or something in regards to the planning board. I'm sorry. Um, but I believe we're going to go into the executive session for.
For advice of council.
For advice of council, so. We could adjourn.
Yeah, we'll have to do motion to adjourn.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion to enter executive session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Brought my dancing shoes. Can I have a motion to come back from executive session?
We need everybody, we have, okay, yeah, yeah. Uh, motion to return from executive session.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just waiting for one member to come from the restroom. Welcome, everybody, thank you very much for your patience. I'll move it to start in a second, we're just, one of our members had to run to the restroom, so be in a second. Oh, there he goes. Welcome, everybody, to the May ninth, two thousand twenty-three planning board meeting. Um, I'd like to have a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting if without, if there are, are there any corrections?
Uh, we discussed one brief correction and I think it's already been, um, addressed prior to the meeting.
Uh, so can I have a motion?
So motion to approve the minutes.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna go to item number one, continued public hearing on application for special use permit and site plan approval.
Are we gonna do miscellaneous first?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Bring you back. For all those in miscellaneous, I'm gonna do everybody a favor, alright, instead of having you wait. Um, let's start with the, um, miscellaneous, uh, continued requests, considered request for ninety day extension on site plan, special use permit and subdivision.
Sixteen West Main?
Yeah, sixteen West Main.
Are they here? Cool.
Great.
Quick. Yep, how are you?
Alright, so, um, yeah, I'm R E A Segal representing the applicant. Um, but basically, we've been working with the city responding to comments. Um, and there, there's been a little bit of back and forth with, um, revising drawings to respond to those comments. So we, we've been working on, um, getting ready to have the drawings ready for signature, which they pretty much are now, so that, that's happening. We're dealing with the Board of Health, we, we just, um, needed a little bit more time, so we're, we're looking for a six month extension.
Okay. Six month?
Yeah.
Okay. What does it say?
It says ninety days.
It says ninety days.
Uh, um, yeah, I didn't see that, they, they mentioned six months, but is that?
It's within the board's discretion, you can do ninety, you can do six months, whatever feel is reasonable.
Anybody have a problem with the request?
I don't have a concern.
Any problem with requests for six months?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion to grant request for six month extension.
Second?
Aye. Oh, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yes, alright, thank you. You know, okay, just.
It just says in the agenda.
Agenda.
Okay.
Okay, we have two certificates of, uh, appropriateness, forty-six, four fifty-six Main Street for facade. Come on up. Yeah? How are you?
I was here, um, I was here at the last meeting and supplied a, um, a more detailed elevation.
Come on, step up, step up. Thanks, we can see.
And with detailed elevation, it was, uh, the president.
Mm-hmm. Man, everybody see this? Did you see it?
Um, it was a question about color. And there was an elevation on the.
Colors?
Molding, I do have a color swatch, but that was approved by the West End.
Any objections to anything? Any, any, any comments or questions?
It wasn't clear to me what the color was.
Oh, you have the color swatch? There you go, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, no, no worries. Just wanted to comment that I, I very much appreciate you putting together the design drawings and giving us the, um, the catalog cuts. It's really helpful.
Yes. I think it gives, hopefully gives some detail that the community has asked for.
Yeah, perfect, you, you got your, you got your color.
And, um, I also, oops.
Which is the one that's selected, I wasn't sure.
Do you have the, um, yeah, can you just refresh us on the, on the color swatches for the different elements?
The top color swatch was the.
Okay.
Color, um, the second two colors were for the sun.
Okay.
The big, the big background color is in the.
Motion to approve? I'm gonna save you trouble, your motion approved?
Yeah, and I, I was gonna say one last thing, I also appreciate that in the columns that you picked up the chamfers from the exist, a lot of the other adjacent storefronts have that detail, so, yeah, thanks. So I don't have any questions or comments.
Motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You got it, done. There you go.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
Certificate of appropriateness for one sixty-nine, one to one seventy-five Main Street facade, is he here?
I, I think my client submitted the drawings, but didn't tell me.
Oh.
So I, I don't, I don't have anything with me, I, I, do you have the?
We have it up here.
Okay, thank goodness.
You have it?
Yeah, let me get it, I'll get it on screen.
If I can answer anything, I will.
What, you wanna come up, you wanna approach for a second and just, uh?
Yeah, they, they said that, he just thinks the side, if he wanted to change the color, it's been on there forever to.
Do we have the, um?
You have the swatch color?
It's up here, right?
Yeah.
So you, could you just, so what is, so the cornice trim is the soot color? And then, uh, there's a, it, what's, what's the French gray all of the?
The body.
Yeah. And then. Stonington gray on, on these brackets on the? It's a gray on the, on the cornice brackets and, uh, these are the three. And this is what the existing, if you wanna, it's got that green on it.
Yeah, no, yeah, I was, I was looking at it the other day. It's better.
Any comment?
Anybody else wanna come somewhere else? I don't, I don't have any questions.
Anybody have any questions on it?
I, same thing, everybody's, uh, it's, I'm glad it's not, uh, that same shaded gray.
Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're done. Now, moving on, continued, we're going to item number one, continued public hearing on application for special use permit and site plan approval, hotel and event space, eleven thirteen Walcott Avenue, submitted by Prophecy Theater LLC. Thank you for your patience for.
Absolutely, I, I've trademarked that term, the Taylor Palmer to sneak up and try and get those extensions, so I appreciate those applicants and sorry that we've held you up before. Um, for the record, my name is Taylor Palmer, I'm a partner with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader on behalf of the applicant. Uh, tonight I'm joined by, uh, our, our architects who have just snuck ahead of us on those two applications, R E A Segal, uh, Rich D'Andre from Colliers Engineering Design is our traffic consultant, Mike Bodendorf's our engineer from Hudson Land Design. We're also joined, uh, by Taylor Sturm from Beilang Associates. So usually we all have a lot of Johns and, uh, and Mikes around, so now it's time for another Taylor or T two. Um, we're also joined by the applicant this evening. As the chairman mentioned, we are before you for our continued seeker review on our site plan and special permit public hearings on the project. We were last before you actually in March, not in April. Um, that allowed the board, uh, to come out to the site for, well, uh, certain board members, uh, both past and present, shout out to Jill, uh, for coming out to our site visit on, uh, April eleventh, uh, for a visit during the site visit, members visited both our site and then the adjoining properties, uh, that have come out during the public hearing, uh, to discuss, uh, well, to, to review the properties. Uh, the applicant provided a tour, um, of the existing rectory and the cemetery and showed the expansive hall, uh, while highlighting the reduced maximum capacity uh, for the project. Representatives of the new River Ridge development then provided, I believe, a tour, um, without the applicant or representatives of West End Lofts, and we understand that included stops at Hammond Plaza, The Views and West End Lofts. Um, in advance of and following our site visit, we did submit three supplemental submissions, uh, to the office, uh, dated March thirty-first, April twenty-fifth and May eighth. Uh, that enclosed our supplemental acoustical reports, of course, having just provided that to board, we, we don't expect for you all to have digested it necessarily, but of course we have T two, uh, joining me this evening to present our findings and responses, and I understand that the, uh, boards consultant will likely be on the, uh, the call or on the Zoom. Our revised or refined site plan includes our revised seating arrangement, that was one of the requests from the board, um, which reflects the applicant's further reduced capacity for these maximum occupancy events from one hundred and eighty down to one hundred and fifty total attendees. Um, and I'll certainly let R E A touch on those specifics just so that we can, um, highlight that for the board. Um, and additionally, our noise consultant will discuss the acoustical report and reiterate the prior conclusions that the project will not have any potentially significant adverse noise impacts, uh, produced from the sound levels consistent with the existing built environment and of course the busy nine D, um, quarter. As we discussed in both the reports, which is in our report and the city's report, um, the sound consultants have reached a consensus that sounds generated from within the conference center, the former church, um, will not create any adverse impact on the surrounding area. That result is accomplished in large part of the applicant's numerous mitigation measures that we've implemented throughout this process. Obviously, we've been before you for, for many, many months, um, and we've continued to modify and, and adjust that programming, uh, both, uh, to address the board's comments and those from the public. Uh, we've included reduced hours, total event capacity, and we've included decibel limitations and sound dampening, uh, through architectural components to ensure the facility itself doesn't have those impacts. Uh, on that note, as we, uh, provided both verbally and written comments previously, um, which included comments from those living in the adjoining artist housing development closest to the north end of the driveway, um, and whose porch is front on nine D, this is a busy corridor, um, and vehicle noise and pedestrian traffic. Our reports further detail the existing sound emissions attributable to the surrounding residential developments, which to the applicant's knowledge are not currently being mitigated and would otherwise be subject to the city's noise ordinance. Of course, this project has to comply with a noise ordinance, that's notwithstanding the discussions we're having with your board. To emphasize this point, any use on the applicant's property, including an existing church, the no build condition, will involve vehicles entering and exiting the property, deliveries, UPS trucks, Amazon vehicles, refuse collection, garbage trucks, patron and pedestrian voices, all of these are similar and consistent to those uses abutting us and could even be considered to be less frequent. These factors result in an elevated sound environment in, in this city in which the project is embedded. It's respectfully submitted that the applicant's greatly reduced hours of operation, total event capacity reductions, the limitations on the days of the week that the spaces open in the historic church, and all the other mitigation measures support this. I'll turn it to R E A just to walk through, please, the stage, uh, the.
Can I, uh, just ask one really quick question, and this is like a really picky and point, but in, at the beginning of the narrative that you just shared with us, you kind of reversed the order of the site visits, and it's probably not important, but the board.
Oh, the order of how we're at?
Yeah, the board had a motion, I mean, we, we made a motion to do a, um, a site visit, which started out with representatives of River Ridge, uh, The View, Hammond Plaza, took us around and, and showed us their perspectives on the project. And then after that was completed, applicant was kind enough to make themselves available to take us on a tour of the inside of the church and the property, but it's just reversed order and it was kinda like, you know, too separate, but.
It's, it's, I appreciate the clarification, yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
Mr. Segal.
Good evening, so, um, yeah, we, we made some changes to the seating layout in, in the existing church building that reduced the number of occupants to, um, you know, the maximum that we're working with. And it also allowed for a little bit of flexibility in how the seating was arranged and how, how it would be, uh, cut off when we needed to reduce the number. So there, there's a, um, there, there's, there's two different seating arrangements, this, this one shows sort of an event one, if there's a wedding or something like that. Um, so there's additional seats that could be up on those risers, but we would then close off the row seating on, on the upper three rows. There, there's also sort, more of a performance, um, seating layout, uh, again, with the maximum number of people, and then if the cafe is open, as was agreed to, that would be reduced even further and those last three rows again would be, um, you know, gated off. So that, that's the main difference in the, in the seating, just, um, so we have the demonstration of the compliance with the maximum number of people. The removed. And then on, on the site plan, that there was, um, just a few minor things that we did, uh, apart from the major thing of removing the cemetery trail. So that, that's no longer, um, gonna be part of the project, so there won't be people walking through the cemetery area. But there's a, there, there's still a path down to it and a gate, um, at the end of that path for maintenance, for, for the owners to maintain the cemetery, but it's, it's not gonna be used as a public walking way anymore.
Can we, uh, can we ask that question now about, um? We had a, I had a question about, have you checked into what, if any, applicable regulations there are for the maintenance of the cemetery? I took a look at the Department of State's Division of Cemeteries regs, which really only seem to apply to public not-for-profit cemeteries, and they have an exclusion for religious or private cemeteries. So I called them and asked somebody to get back to me to ask them, what happens if a religious cemetery is closed and then becomes part of a private, you know, property, a commercial property? And have you looked, have you looked into that at all, just to see what the, um, potential, just, uh, obligations are or requirements for maintenance?
Sure, to your point, I'm, there, there indeed are different criteria for private and public cemeteries. We can provide a more detailed submission on how that works, but generally speaking, we haven't absolutely applied it to this. Our consultant is, we are, the applicant has mentioned that he will be utilizing a consultant to do the work, um, and any maintenance that would be done, but we'll, we'll get a better answer for you, but generally speaking, when it's a private cemetery, it's, there are less controls. But of course, anything that would be done on site would be to protect the integrity and, and to, and to just really clean up what has not been maintained for many, many years.
And, um, only other question I had was, has, um, I was looking at a YouTube videos from a couple of years ago. Has anything been done that we know of to secure the remains and the crypts?
They're not there.
They're no longer, so like, from what was seen in that video two years ago, that's no longer?
Sorry, from what I know, the remains have been removed from those crypts before we had the problem, but, um, the, and, and I've spoken to other, uh, cemetery professionals about this, and we haven't got to the point where there's, there's a plan on how to proceed with restoration of the cemetery, right, we could talk about that as well, but, um, as far as I know, the remains were removed from those crypts.
Okay, yeah, maybe if, when you submit that, um, outline of what's applicable.
Right.
If there was a plan to have like a cemetery professional come and do a survey just to check to see whether there was anything that still needed to be secured or something that could be described, if that was a, a component.
Well, yeah, I mean, what would be done will comply with, with private cemetery regu, you know, anything that would be applicable, and of course, more importantly, to maintain the, maintain the integrity of the, of the cemetery. We've also worked to include a note on the plan that we'll be working to, that was another question, question from Mr. Clark. It was, there's a couple of questions that Mr. Clark had presented, but, um, we'll incorporate a note on the.
Yeah, sorry, I kinda jumped ahead, but it, it came to mind when, uh, R E A was talking about the removal of the walking path and stuff from the.
Yeah, well, there will be, we do have communications, but they're gonna be submitted to in, in a formal submission, but we will be adding in, a, a note to that plan reflective of maintenance, clearing branches, the other things that are there, but we'll get up more specific, I've, we've researched this before, we've had many clients who have acquired cemeteries because they're family cemeteries often, not, you know, brought necessarily from a church, and the state has no obligation to come in and do anything. They're private cemeteries, so when they're private, they have, there's just different regulations.
And just, just to be clear, like, we've never had any intention to remove any graves or tombs or anything like that, it's all staying put.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Alright, with that, I will turn over to our noise consultant just to, um, go through their report, and of course, we've submitted that, but it will be considered. I understand your consultant may have, have already reviewed it, may be able to provide responses, but we know the board really only has had it for twenty-four hours. We just wanna make sure you had something from us to kind of, it's really just an outline for what our consultant's gonna talk about tonight.
Thank you, um, just for the record, the, the public record, I, I like to think of myself as T one, not, not T two. Uh, so hi, this is my first time before this board, so good evening, members of the board, members of the public. Uh, my name is Taylor Sturm, Senior Project Scientist at Beilang Associates, uh, based out of Suffolk County, Long Island. Um, I'm taking the place of Mike Bonchi tonight, who is, um, sort of my senior colleague and much more of a seasoned noise expert, uh, when compared to me, so, uh, we'll try to get through this as best we can. Uh, I'm not going to rehash the project too much, I know that you're all very familiar with this, and, um, Taylor also did a very good job of, of describing where we're at, but, um, I did wanna talk about this series of supplemental analyses that our firm had provided in order to sort of inform the applicant of additional mitigation measures that they should take and try to best make this project, uh, sort of the best project it can be from a noise point of view. And, um, one of the things that has happened in the intervening time, I think, from the last, uh, hearing that this project was before and now, is that from what I understand, the city's noise consultant, the noise consultancy, um, has, for the most part, agreed with all of the aspects, the sound aspects of this project, um, the mitigation and so on, um, with one sort of notable outlier, uh, which is that northern driveway that runs along the northern property line that's shared between the, um, west and lofts, I think it's called, the apartment building complex to the north. Um, so that's sort of what, what I'm planning on talking about a little bit tonight, I'll try to be as brief as I can, obviously. Um, but I wanna, I wanna look at this driveway and, and sort of demonstrate to you through sort of two lenses how this is not necessarily something that's going to cause an undue impact on this, on this property. And that's the existing and proposed use of this driveway and also, um, the context in which this driveway, um, exists now. And so talking about the use, it's, it's worth mentioning that this is an existing driveway. This project is not really proposing a new driveway, um, this does exist now and it serves the church and the, the rectory building. And as such, you know, this, this church, which can fit three hundred something people in it, they're within their rights to shuttle all of their parishioners on site and then take all those shuttle buses and shuttle them down that driveway and, and caught, basically unabated, create as much noise as they want, for lack of a better, uh, way to describe that. And so when we look forward to the proposed action, um, this will be abated by a sound wall, and the use will be perhaps more frequent, but these will be mostly residential vehicles, passenger cars, um, which the noise consultancy has sort of agreed is not the main issue here. Uh, the main issue is sort of light duty shuttle vans, uh, delivery trucks, sort of think of small Amazon type truck, which are, um, in actual fact, vehicles that can go on the site today without any issue, um, and can run along that same driveway. Um, also, just through some personal communication, I've heard that, um, these driveways are used now occasionally by delivery service vehicles that are servicing nearby properties, um, occasionally landscapers will, uh, use this area for their vehicles and. Me too. Um, so, um, I just, that's something to worth, uh, keeping in mind in terms of the existing and proposed use, how this, this isn't a real substantial change from what exists now. Um, in terms of the context. Sorry. No, should I pause or?
Hey, David, can you, uh?
I'll take a.
You wanna take her across?
Yeah, you can take her.
Do, David, if you want.
There's, there's one, yeah, if you wanna go there.
This way, if you're not.
Okay.
You want, take her across into the, uh?
I think she's a little lost. Yeah, please.
Cause there's one writing through the, you could go into the.
Thank you.
That's okay, I didn't know if you need to do a motion to do something like that or?
No.
Life happens.
No, not those kind of biological necessities, let's just go.
Right.
We all been there. Go ahead, please continue.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, so that's sort of discussing the use, how it's virtually, maybe not the same, but not a, a brand new use that needs to be necessarily, um, dealt with in that regard. But also the context, this is, Taylor mentioned this just before, and this is no stranger, strange topic to any of us, this is along Route nine D, certainly one of the more busier roads in and out of Beacon, it's location. Um, you have a bus stop up the road that services the G bus, um, you have pedestrians walking down the street along the public sidewalks on both sides of the road. They can, no matter what time of day they want, they can be on the phone, they can be talking to one another as they walk by. Um, I should mention the, the Metro North train that is just west of, west of the site, that blows their horn, drives by all the time. Uh, that is to say that this is an area that is already, uh, impacted from a noise point of view. This is somewhere that you go outside and you're not expecting to be out in, you know, the middle of the woods or something, this is how the existing condition plays out currently. That's not to say that, you know, something like an apartment building shouldn't be taken into consideration. But, uh, the apartment building itself is an interesting situation because, you know, this building is not flanked on all sides by meadows and babbling brooks and so on. It, it's flanked on its west side by a fairly substantial parking lot, and this parking lot is very, I wanna say, active from a, from a pretty standard point of view, there's cars going in and out, there's people who, I mean, this is a residential parking lot, so there's no, there's no reason to expect that people won't be entering and exiting slamming their car doors at eleven-thirty, and if someone wants to do that, they're totally allowed to at night. Um, but that's to say that this parking lot actually has a fairly substantial potential to also cause, uh, sound level impacts in the general area. And sure enough, when I was there doing the original sound monitoring for, for this application, there were people warming their cars up, idling huge, um, pickup trucks right along the property line, because this, this parking lot, interestingly enough, actually goes to that shared, shared lot line. And the point of me saying this isn't to point fingers and say, well, if they're able to unabatedly create sound levels onto this property, why can't, you know, we do the same or something like that, it's just to describe that, the reason why this isn't a big deal is because it, it's not causing a, an impact. This is not, um, something that's out of the realm of normalcy in this area. Um, so when you, when you look at that, also, I will say, there's a, there's a, a garbage receptacle right there along that same lot line that I guess has to be serviced by garbage trucks, and, and also, that building probably gets a, a ton of Amazon trucks a day. If it's anything like, um, if, you know, someone like my girlfriend lives there, they'll probably come at least a couple of times a day. So the point of me saying all of this is basically to outline that, even though I think there was a little bit of, um, uh, maybe disagreements between the noise consultancy and, um, and the calculations that were provided by this office at one point, it was a minor discrepancy. Um, the impact here is going to be negligible, uh, to almost zero impact. And so how is that something that we could, I could come up here and tell you, okay, there's no impact, that's great, but how is that something that we can quantify? And the, probably the easiest way to quantify. And probably the easiest way to quantify that is by using the Housing and Urban Development Standards, the HUD standards, which are put in place for almost this exact reason. It's the, you have apartment buildings in cities, you have dwellings and residences, and you want to make sure that the people that live in those buildings have a safe and quiet place to go and live their lives and not have to be worried about the sound from the cities and other traffic and impacts and so on. And here, that, that standard is 45 decibels when you're inside with the windows closed. And when we use the, the calculations provided by the noise consultancy, we were able to see that we would be under that threshold by two decibels. And that's using that northern driveway, the way it's proposed, with the six foot, it's going to be an attractive cedar sound barrier. And so if, by meeting those HUD standards, we can say, okay, well, this will not be impacting the residences of this building from a sort of quantitative point of view. So when you take these three things into consideration, one, that the use already exists. This is already a driveway that has the potential to be active if the church so sees it fit. That's totally up, you know, that's their prerogative and that sound level could exist unabated. Two, that the context is what it is. This is a very disturbed area, as I just described. And three, that, you know, the HUD, the HUD standards in this case will be something that won't be exceeded by the use of this northern driveway. I think you can say pretty unequivocally that there won't be an adverse impact based on this. So I would, I was going to say urge, but a polite way to say urge would be the board to look at this from an impact point of view and maybe see that there, there won't be one by using this driveway. So if there's any questions, either from you all or from the noise consultancy, I'd be happy to answer them, but...
I just wanted to add one sort of point to Taylor's presentation. Thank you, T12, that there is a, you know, this, this condition, what we're talking about, sort of this, this distilled piece that we're on to, this is about a driveway that the board recommended that we add to this project for site circulation. The applicant, if you recall, had a previously proposed a U-turn, you know, a turnaround in front of the church for aesthetic purposes and otherwise. We've added this at the recommendation of the board to, again, emphasize or enhance site circulation. There was a concern represented by Mr. Clark, you know, about vehicles turning in the site. So we've done this to address other considerations. So this isn't without thought, but ultimately what, what Taylor was discussing with you all really is that the existing conditions, and we've had this discussion before, we're not talking about a live jazz band playing outside for three hours like it's going to happen at the church on Thursday.
Thursday, Saturday.
Saturday, across the street at 8:00 PM, right? That's not what we're proposing, where there's people congregating and things to that effect. We're an indoor conference center, limited days, limited folks, cars leaving the site, people leaving the site. They're not there celebrating outside, they're not partying outside. This is leaving the site. And we're doing all we can to mitigate that to the point where it doesn't rise to a substantial, potentially significant adverse environmental impact. Will there be vehicles? Yes. Would there be for any use on the site? Absolutely. So all we're trying to bring into the context is existing conditions, no build condition, could be much worse. We're not trying to do that. We're trying to mitigate and we have mitigated to the extent practicable to ensure that it does not have a significant adverse impact.
Thanks.
Thanks.
So, let's see, let's start around the board.
Do you want to hear from your noise consultant?
Yes.
Because he's going to come up now.
Do we need to?
I will say T2 has better hair.
Eric Sworling, if you're on the...
Yeah.
The board is asking you if you could summarize your, your most recent memo.
Yeah, thank you very much. So the memo concurs that the noises that are generated inside the facility and immediately outside have already been addressed. There are, the music inside the facility will be attenuated additionally by the application of an acoustical panel. Engineering has to be determined interior to the windows. There are, there are vestibules, there's a vestibule to the front of the property that will contain, so there's no door directly open from the venue out to the outside. It's been represented that there are other, the other doors have similar configurations where it's not directly open to the venue space. The HVAC has been addressed where they have accepted our recommendation to increase the acoustical barrier around the HVAC to a height of one foot above any outlet of the top of the unit. The, the questions on the rear deck, voices in HVAC, there were some faux windows in the, in the wall that is going to be constructed. Those have agreed to be closed. The, or it was clarified that they were not open initially, but it was, that was unclear. The, the voices of people onsite, their analysis, and I did a separate independent analysis using different numbers, but came to the same conclusion that it would be below the permissible daytime limit of 55 at the property line. As I've stated previously, what makes significant difference is that we're now, because they will not be operating at nighttime by the code, the standard that applies is the 55 decibels at the property line, not playing the audible within the residences. That discussion, which I had some significant differences, that has been mooted now about what constitutes plain, what, what would represent plain audibility with inside a residence. The discussion is unnecessary now. So what was left was the discussion of the driveway between the rectory, which will soon be a hotel if the proposal goes ahead, and the lofts. The calculations that were performed, I noted in my most recent report, there were some significant errors in the calculations. But nonetheless, the, the conclusion, and, and it results in the fact that the vehicles will, will not be compliant with the, light vans and trucks will not be compliant with the 55 decibel permissible sound level limit at the windows, the first, second, and third floor windows. That being said, vehicles that are currently traversing that driveway are likely not, high probability of certainty that they are not in compliance. Another, another use of that site would also not be in compliance at those windows. We provided in our, in that report, the, what we believe to be the correct calculations and suggested that a standard be used, the HUD standard that Mr. Sterm referred to. Based upon that analysis, it would not be impactful at the times that is occurring. It would be useful to, to determine if this goes, goes forward, that there'd be a period of time where the, the vehicle traffic on that site, the hours of that traffic be noted. If, for instance, service vehicles such as catering trucks and, oh, banned equipment trucks, if those start leaving the site at 12 o'clock, if the, let's say the, the event ends at 8:30, but they start leaving at 12:30 and you have, you know, a box truck full of equipment or catering, that, that could be an issue. But we largely concur. Also, another question that was not addressed is traffic leaving the site will have to accelerate to get onto Walcott Avenue. It was, it had been mentioned a couple of times in reports that that should be addressed. It has not been addressed, but I did note in my report that there is a signaled crosswalk at, virtually at that exact location. What that will result in is there are vehicles at that same exact location that will be accelerating from a, from a dead stop after the light. So it is not, the sound source at that location of vehicles accelerating is something that is currently as a result of that crosswalk anyway. Those are the chief findings in my report.
Thank you.
So one of the questions we had is what they were going to do to restore the cemetery. You know, we'd like that information included on the plans. Mr. Clark is not here, but that was also one of his comments with regards to cemetery. Have some other cleanup requirements on the plans. One of the plans was missing some information. I think it just got shut off inadvertently when it was printed. Then Mr. Clark's had some additional comments as far as Sheet 5 showing a public restroom in accordance with the city's code. And then he was asking, there was a number of contuing public comments, and he was asking for some of them to be clarified in writing. Those being, is a fence proposed along the River Ridge side of the project as shown on submitted sheets? Is there enough soil depth to support the plantings on the River Ridge side of the project? Will the hotel be in operation before the accessory event and cafe uses be activated? Will successive or overlapping events be scheduled that exceed 150 total occupants per day? And will smoking be prohibited inside and outside the premises? And then he had some just other general comments.
Are we gonna, did you want to respond to that?
We can certainly respond to those and we'll certainly do it in writing, but I think we can do it in a 30-second clip.
Yeah. Okay, so first I can respond, sorry, first I can respond, Gavin Hecker. I can respond to the, the fence proposed along the River Ridge side. And it is true that there is currently a fence proposed along River Ridge side of the project and as shown on the submitted sheets. There's been a lot of discussion back and forth with this particular fence. At first, there was a, what we thought was consensus that there is just to be a vegetative barrier, so that for the most part of the past two years had existed. At some point, we had discussed it and, and there were a couple of concerns about that not being adequate. So we just put in a fence, and that was just based on concerns from us as well, because we do have, we, we think the vegetative border is adequate, but there are delivery trucks from River Ridge that park on our property and they also, they, to service River Ridge along with, with people that could potentially move back and forth. However, we're, we're under agreement now that there are, the fence that is currently proposed can be removed based on input from the neighbors as a vegetative border and will serve the same screening purposes and the fence is not required for, for any further mitigation. And that's, if everybody is okay with that, we can remove that fence as, that's what I believe the River Ridge community wants as well. So that's a really long-winded answer to that question. Sorry. So is there enough soil depth to support the plantings on River Ridge side of the project? So we went back to our landscape architect, Deborah Adamson, and here is what she said. "The area in question currently has thriving plants of all kinds, leading me to believe that the existing soil is fertile and capable of sustaining more plants. If the ground conditions require more growing medium, we can bring in clean premium top soil. There is an existing row of trees currently growing there. If we have to bring in soil and plant the proposed trees slightly above grade, that is common practice and would give the neighbors more of a screen." And that's from Deborah. So, and for, for the, the answer to the smoking, though, smoking will be prohibited inside and we will limit smoking to a small desert area outside or it can be banned completely. And we wanted to know that if it was prohibited on the neighboring properties, we would certainly prohibit it on our properties. So...
Yeah, I think, and the other, there was another comment about whether or not we would be utilizing the existing church space while the development of the hotel is there. We would certainly defer and will speak to the building department and council, but yes, we'd actively like to maintain the existing operations in utilization until the hotel is built. Of course, we'd be accepting of any condition of an approval that says your hotel clearly has to be built, not just conference space and so on and so forth. Because again, it currently has a CO to be used for not the, you know, at the church and its accessory uses. So that question we'll certainly address, but it doesn't have a secret bearing on the We can provide, we'll provide written comments to anything we have in address.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you. Let's go to the public, opening up for public comment. Please step up, identify
Matt Bloom. I live at The View, 30 Beekman Street. During the last planning board hearing, one of the applicants, who also identifies as an investor in Prophecy Theater, admitted to being unable to control Prophecy Theater's adverse impacts on the neighborhood. I've put in my letter to the board, the relevant quotes, which were taken directly from the YouTube posting of that hearing. Not only did this applicant emphatically admit Prophecy Theater would adversely impact the neighborhood, she also twice invoked her long relationships with the members of the planning board. This suggests that the applicant is unaware that the planning board making decisions based on personal relationships, which AKA cronyism, and not the applicable ordinances, might expose it to legal ramifications. Additionally, by attempting to hijack and disrupt a previously scheduled private meeting on April 14th between the board presidents of Hammond Plaza, River Ridge, and The View, the applicant and its attorney were once again attempting to manipulate the planning board and to intimidate the Hammond Plaza, River Ridge, and View board presidents. This type of inappropriate, unprofessional, unethical conduct is yet another example of why we strongly suspect the applicant's behavior toward the residents of this quiet residential neighborhood, some of whom have lived here for decades, will be equally, if not more disrespectful, if the project is approved. And we reject the inference by the applicant and its two supporters that because some of us are newcomers, we have no right to protest this project and should instead just roll over and let Prophecy Theater profit by disrupting and compromising the quality of our lives. We happen to live in a residentially zoned neighborhood, in residential buildings approved by the City of Beacon Planning Board. For this reason and because this project does not meet the conditions for a special permit, the planning board should issue a positive declaration. Thank you.
Normally, I wouldn't get up to address comments, but given the nature of those comments and the ethical implications that were stated, I would note for the record that there I was, that the applicant and the applicant's family, children, and otherwise, my son, we were all there in shorts and t-shirts, sitting there, letting anyone walk the property. So to be very clear for those that were not in attendance, this was a very informal sitting and letting people walk around discussion. There were no, there were no substantive discussions with the board. There was a visualization of the property. So that's inappropriate to characterize it that way, and it was a very informal gathering, quite literally with children running around in the pews. So we'll put that for the record and I'll certainly defer back to the public.
Thank you. Well, one, one, I just, because if, a gentleman, sir?
Sir?
One second. Because some of the accusations that were just made with respect to the members of the board and cronyism are not acceptable to me. So Jennifer, if you don't mind, I'd like you to address that from a legal manner, because I've been sitting in this chair too long to be accused of that. But no, no, please, 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 you made a statement, I'd like to address it. I'll let you have a chance, all right?
Sure. So I'll just clarify that social relationships by board members, between board members and applicants, board members and members of the public are not the basis of a conflict of interest under the law. If that were the case, you would never find members of the community to serve on these boards, because in small communities, everybody knows each other. It's conflicts of interest go more towards financial, fiscal relationships between board members and applicants or board members and members of the public. The social relationships, knowing each other, whether it's for a year or 10 years or 20 years, is not a basis for a conflict of interest.
Yeah. Okay, give you a chance. Thank you. Sir.
I wasn't, I was not inferring that the board is engaging in cronyism. I was inferring that the applicant was invoking a, you know, longstanding relationship with members of the board.
We don't know who that is, just to be clear.
Well, it's on the...
When the applicant said, "I've known you for 20 years," that's not me. I don't know who...
She named two names. It's on, it's on the YouTube record. It's been posted. You can watch it. I'm not, I'm not, I was not inferring the board is engaging in that. And I apologize if I didn't do that clearly.
And if I may, the board does not have any financial interest in this application. That app, we have also submitted a affidavit with our application indicating that the board members do not also have, sorry, that the applicant does not have any personal or, or relational or familial relations with anyone on this board, which is part of the application and part of the record.
Thank you. Sir, please. Thank you. Sir, please, thank you.
Elliot Trifman, River Ridge. Been here four times speaking about our position, which is against the applicant. I fear that the, that Lauren and Gavin misunderstand us. They think we're from Squaresville, that we're very unhip and uncool, and we're probably ripe for the early bird special dinners. Nothing can be further from the truth. I'd like to back up to an earlier point in my life, so that perhaps Gavin and Lauren will see me in a different light. In 1967, the world changed. I became a hippie. Yes, believe it or not, I had long hair. I walked around campus with a painted raincoat. I was poor, so my shoes got holes. I wore galoshes over them even on dry days. I was a theater minor and acted in plays and wrote one. I listened to music all the time as one, and was one of the few students who had his own stereo in his dorm. I played bongos and kungas with my brother. When Dolby came out with the stereo cassette player, I bought it along with some basic components. In short, music made my day. I went to concerts at university, and they included Richie Havens, Chicago. Post-college, I went to Jones Beach to watch shows and listen to music. I saw Stevie Nicks, Barenaked Ladies, and Michael McDonald, among others. I'm not square. The list goes on. Fast forward to when my three kids were in college. We did a generational crossover and saw Richie Havens three times at the Stephen Talkhouse in Amagansett. Some four years ago, we all went to see Mike and the Mechanics, My Default Group, at a theater in Manhattan. All of those venues provided or had easy access to parking, were large in size and offered several escape routes should an incident arise, something that is an ever-growing concern today. None interfered with the quiet enjoyment rights of surrounding residential homes, because all of those venues were situated far away from them. The same is true of Buffalo's, and I mentioned this, Bayville, the colloquial name for the former church converted by Annie DeFranco and her business partner into a multi-use venue that includes weddings and other affairs, and of course, music concerts. I presented this, to this board photos of Bayville and its surroundings, but my time was cut too short, so I was unable to finish my words about its virtues. It is where our son got married some twelve years ago. In short, Bayville offers a very large venue with multiple entrances, two floors for entertainment or catering, parking for over a hundred cars, and in the butts, municipal lots, together offering some three hundred parking spots. It's in a commercial zone on a major street, running into the center of the city of Buffalo, with a stop, bus stop right at Bayville. It's surrounded by offices that, that at night offer additional parking, and there are eateries and shops right there, too. It has everything that Prophecy wishes it had but doesn't. Even if arguendo, Bayville is the gold standard for such conversions, and there is room for something of lesser quality, like silver or bronze, in my view, based on my personal experience, Prophecy is but tin. Thank you.
Nice to see you, counselor.
Teresa Kraft. As stated by the previous comment at last, that took place at the last public hearing, when we heard one of the applicants pull on the heartstrings and the friendship connections with some board members. I believe it was the chair, so it is on the video. But we, the people, can't talk about our feelings about this project, or how it will affect our quality of life. The only good thing that has come out of this awful eighteen-month process is that the residents from Beacon have gotten to know one another. Almost two years in, and there have been so many lessons learned from this one project. One is that public comments and concerns basically have no place in any decision-making process in our city regarding a project that will affect every resident. We know from history, Beacon residents are resilient. Today, we need our city's appointed planning board to work for all the residents on both sides of this fence. Stated over and over, it's a great adaptive reuse of a historic building, but not at this location. No matter how many times they have recalculated their numbers, this project's venue, as proposed, is totally unaffordable by any one department or a group of departments and emergency services in this city, and should not be left in the hands of the city residents. Beacon needs to go back to the drawing board and change city laws and building codes where necessary, because there are, they've been recently revised, and it's not working. Voting no is the only option to stop this. Do not cave in. Stop pushing this along. Do not grant a special use permit or a site plan approval. It's time for another building moratorium.
John Bono, Ten Stratford Avenue. You know, I was watching a city council meeting, the first meeting of April, and when I was watching the meeting, they were talking about the parking lot for the fire department. And they were talking about, you know, how they cut down trees, they're going to make room in there to park more cars in there. The funny thing is, is within the last year, listening to their traffic consultant, or whoever the guy is, he was saying they could park seventy-two cars there, and that's before any changes were to be made to this parking lot. So what I'm saying is, is, you know, this is just another thing, you know? It's another thing. We keep changing things, the story keeps changing. You know, I don't know who to believe, I know who to believe, I can believe myself, but I can't believe everything that comes out of their mouth. I think when this thing is going to be built, it's going to start happening, and then the rules are going to change. Okay? It isn't going to be closing at eight-thirty, it's going to be closing at ten-thirty, and eleven-thirty, you know? It's just, I don't have faith in what you're saying. You know, I just want you to know that. And as far as the Prophecy Theater, I think the hotel has to be built before the Prophecy Theater can open up. I think that's the way the law goes. Thank you very much.
So just on Rachel Riffkind. River Ridge. Is my, is my good?
Yeah.
So I'm just going upon everything. It's true, we're based on assumptions, and there, thank you for the planning board, because I don't know what happened during that walkthrough of our properties, or Hammond Plaza, The View, and River Ridge, because I actually, myself, got tempted to look at it, but I said no, because I would screw up the whole entire thing that we worked a year or four. So bottom line is, I just don't think we believe in the applicant and what they're saying. And it just doesn't make sense. If you walk that property, you can clearly see, there is, it's, there's, there's fourteen employees. So you have a sixty, a thirty-room hotel, so we're going to say thirty-room hotel, that's what he's, if that's what he's allowed to build, I give him that credit. So that's, you want a hundred percent occupancy, if I'm correct, if you're in the hotel business. So that's sixty people. So has anybody, so sixty people, then you have one hundred fifty people. Has anybody done the decimal levels in terms of that? And then, I'm sitting here, we're all talking about Walcott Avenue, we are in a governmental building right now. I don't know your decimal levels. You're on Walcott Avenue as well. And I just, let's just go to the facts. Obviously, a decision is going to be made sooner than later, and it's upon you. And we, as the people, speak. And I'm very happy for the three people that speak for the applicant. Thank you. And the church, I know it's being, we all know it's being utilized. Is it legal? I don't know the deal that the, that the applicant made when he purchased the parcel. So if he's doing that, and if it's in as condition, when I previewed it in 2021, I think it is, then it's a liability already on our hands. And I think that's what we're saying, is like, we just don't believe what the applicant says. Give us something that's right. Thank you.
Hi, Steve Jaffe, live at River Ridge. Densely populated urban area, heavily traveled urban arterial. That's how River Ridge and Walcott Avenue are characterized in the latest noise report from the applicant's consultant. While that is how an ordinance classifies our neighborhood, it is hardly reality. Couple of weeks ago, most of the planning board toured River Ridge and saw a quiet, peaceful development. The applicant is using the urban characterization as an excuse to try to squeeze in a noisy and disruptive entertainment venue. Their thinking is that trucks sometimes drive by, so what's the big deal if we add more noise and more crowds? I moved to Beacon from New York City. River Ridge, all thirty-six of us, is not densely populated. Also, in the noise report, it says that most, all the noise issues are settled. The applicant claims that the lofts will be protected by the hotel building, but River Ridge throughout the entire report is never mentioned. I suppose that as long as we keep our windows closed and we don't pay attention to the crowds, we should all be happy. Board members, it's clear that this entertainment venue does not fit in our quiet residential neighborhood for noise reasons and for so many other reasons. This project should not be granted a special permit, because it does not meet the conditions required for approval. Thanks for, for listening.
Hi, thank you to the, to the board. I'll just, I'll keep my.
Yeah, name and address.
I'm sorry, my name is Summer Urson. I live at Two Academy Street, directly across the street from the proposed venue. I, I had a lot of concerns at first, too, when I, when I learned about the project, but once I dug into what, what they have planned, I respectfully disagree. They have addressed these concerns very succinctly. They've done many, multiple studies. I couldn't live any closer. It is in my backyard. I believe that these are people that live in our community, I know their people that live in our community, are raising their families here, have their children at the schools that we all go to. They have no desire to build some massive entertainment complex. That's not their goal. It's clearly stated in their plans, and they do have plans for parking, for noise, and if there's a decibel issue, call the city. That's exactly what those laws are for. You can test the decibels. It's easy to do. I really think that they have a great community plan and an entertainment venue that I think we can all enjoy, and they've made a plan to be respectful to their neighbors. It may not be a perfectly quiet and completely desolate place that is, you know, currently falling into despair, but what I think they are offering is something to revitalize these neighborhoods even further. And I hope that what they're planning will add and not detract, despite it not being perfectly silent. And that's what I have to say. Thanks so much.
Hi, I'm Shelley Simmons Bloom of The View. Collectively, our community has repeatedly expressed its concerns over this past year that Prophecy Theater proposal isn't a good fit for our residential neighborhood for reasons of noise disturbance, safety, and trespassing. There are bars and event spaces on Main Street, the actual business district, that have been shut down or relocated due to complaints from concerned neighbors. Why would anyone believe that we should be subject to a district, business district-suited event space when even Main Street would likely not tolerate it? Furthermore, for months now, we've asked the same questions of the applicants, only to be ghosted by them. What are they scared of? If they have a strong vision as they say, and their supporters seem to know what that vision is, but we really don't, it may be in their interest to share it and to respond to our straightforward and reasonable questions. Or perhaps they know we won't like their answers, or perhaps they don't have answers. Unfortunately, at this stage, our capacity for trust has been greatly diminished for all the reasons cited in the various letters to the planning board this month and in prior months. At the very least, the applicant should be required to answer our questions in writing for the record before this hearing goes any further, and I was happy to hear that that was agreed to tonight, including the question that I know wasn't addressed tonight, which was about the multiple events happening on weekends or full days. We'd very much like to have an answer on that. For the applicants to double down on suggesting that their proposed use would only result in conditions that are similar and consistent to what already exists on the site and the surrounding area demonstrates a clear disregard for our concerns and, at best, wishful thinking on their part. This is just another example of the applicants telling us exactly what kind of neighbors they will be. And finally, for the benefit of the small number of Prophecy Theater supporters, and I say this because they seem misinformed about who we are and how many we are, and they probably don't read our letters of concern, we're not a small, a small handful of privileged newcomers. We're actually a collective of residents who live in very close proximity to the proposed event space. We're from River Ridge, The View, Hammond Plaza, West End Lofts, Stratford Avenue, Bayview Avenue, Beacon Street, and others. We're the ones whose quality of life will be most negatively impacted if this event space is approved. And while some of us may have lived here less than five years, my husband and I included, many of us here tonight have lived here for decades, and in some cases, their whole lifetime. But regardless, we're united in our concerns that the Prophecy Theater project, if approved, would function at the expense of our quality of life. And for those reasons, I feel this project should not be granted a special permit, because it just doesn't meet the conditions required for approval. And for this reason, we'll continue to challenge this proposal in its current form, no matter how long it takes. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Betty Wall, Eight River Ridge Court. I know that the applicant and his handful of supporters like to say that there are a few loud detractors from this project, but that is not the case. As a matter of fact, one hundred percent of the eighteen homes at River Ridge submitted letters of concern this month regarding the current proposal. That is in addition to the three hundred and fifty petition signatures that were collected, and all the other letters and personal statements of concern that you have received from nearby community members since this application has become open to public response. If this proposal had been presented before the four surrounding residential developments that the planning board approved or built, perhaps this proposal could have gone through. Or if the applicant was asking for a small hotel and cafe with limited conference center use for its guests, I could see the planning board approving that with certain stipulations. I wouldn't love it, but I could at least understand it. I rewatched the March planning board meeting, and it is abundantly clear from all of your comments that you see the issues with the type of event venue that is being proposed. The applicant and his team of consultants have continually stressed the ordinance aspect of the approval process, while you all have been pushing back on the negative impact that this will have on neighboring residents. Approving a flawed plan and then hoping for the best is not fair to the residents who live here. This proposal is not compatible with our residential neighborhood. It will cause harm to its neighbors, and it should not be granted a special permit, as it simply doesn't meet the conditions for approval. And we will continue to fight it until there is a proposal that fits. And I just want to clarify that we did not say that we don't want a, that fence, we don't want that particular fence. There needs to be something done for noise for River Ridge. There's a lot of discussion about West End Lofts, but we are completely exposed. We share a front lawn, many of our houses share a front lawn, you all saw that, and we are going to suffer the consequences if this is approved, so.
Thank you.
Do you want the noise consultant to address, because there have been revisions made to address noise at River Ridge?
Yeah, that, we, let's, we'll go to them after we go to. All right.
Good evening. Jane Riley, Stratford Avenue. I don't have anything prepared, I was just listening to this evening. So I've been here many times, and I appreciate the work that's been done by the applicant and your attorney and your, your support team, but for me, it just doesn't change, doesn't fit. Neighborhood's too small, residential. Residential. We got enough problems with ninety. We don't need to add anymore. I just don't see how it's going to fit in this neighborhood. That's it.
Thank you.
My name is Dawn Paul Manso, Hammond Plaza. First of all, I'd like to thank the planning board members that attended the walk-around. And I think you all know what happened prior to that walk-around, so we don't need to discuss that. The March twenty-eighth, I believe, meeting, the video, there were certain statements that were made. And I hope you all don't believe that many of us that have come forth from our neighboring communities, or I'll say adjoining communities, aren't aware of negotiations. We know that negotiations, you don't start out with what you want. You start out with something high, and you come down, and you hopefully will get a win-win or something near that. So, the implication that we may not understand negotiations is, is not so. Quality of life versus a corporate spreadsheet or an incorporated spreadsheet, it's, it's hard to balance that. And as it stands right now, as described in, by the applicant, it doesn't seem to be a fit. It seems that one would have to contort themselves in all different types of ways to make it, not where everyone is going to be happy, but where the residents that live in the neighboring area can feel safe, their quality of life, which has all aspects. Whether you're birthing, you know, have a newborn that came in, whether you have an older relative that passed away, a child that's graduating, a child that's studying for exams, all of these things that may exude from the proposed venue can have an impact. Right now, it doesn't fit the residential community. And just for the record, as was mentioned by one of the other speakers, had this been fourteen years ago or prior to all of the developments being built, it may have been, it may have seemed more palatable to the residents that live there. Well, I'm one of the residents that's been there for over twenty-five years, or over twenty years, and each of these developments have been built since I've moved to Hammond Plaza. One of the things is, in coming to the planning board and in talking within our community, we felt like we were heard. Did we get everything we wanted? No. But it seems that we were heard, our suggestions, our concerns were taken into consideration. As it stands now, our community has changed significantly. Take West End Lofts out, take The View out, take River Ridge out. That's what it was. So you can see the, the, the impact. And we're okay with change. We're okay with people making a profit, but not on our quality of life. What's enough? I mean, each of those developments have arrived, in addition to a stairway. So when you look at the impacts, I hope you look at the impacts in their totality. We know that there's a train station. On a good day, you might hear the kids playing at Rose Hill. We know that there's boats. We know that there's cars. We know that there's airplanes. Those are knowns. And periodically, there's a festival at the river. Depending on what type of festival it is, you're going to hear noise. On Thursday nights, there's bongos. That's fine. But it's not persistent. It's not consistent. It's not having to look on the website to see, is, is tonight going to be a night that I'm going to rest well, or am I going to have to be on tins because of the traffic going up the new stairs on Berry Street? I know I've taken up a little more of your time, but what you're hearing is from my heart. And it's not just because I've grew up in Beacon and, you know, I'm Beacon. It's, it's because I'm trying to be unbiased and see what the applicant's point of view is, as well as base it on mine. So, yes, I'm a little skewed because corporate versus personal, and trying not to keep, make it personal is a little challenging, but when you look at it, it doesn't fit. And I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your time on the fourteenth of April.
Thank you.
Please don't do that.
Yeah, we're, we're, I would like, something that's really interesting. I'm going to actually do two things. One, go back to the noise consultant because there were some things that have been changed that you may not be aware of, but something else that I think that we, as a community, need to do, and that is to really have a session collectively with the applicant in a way so we can make sure all the concerns are addressed in a manner that lets everyone understand the balance. Because we are trying to find a balance here, respectively to everybody and everything you say. Believe me, we hear everything from the applicant as well as from our fellow Beaconites. So, I'm going to go to the noise consultant first, and then I'm going to go around the board, and I want to really talk about how we can kind of level set in an environment that allows everyone's voice to be respected. First, to understand exactly what's happening and make sure whatever questions are left open, we can figure out a way to address. So, if you don't mind, let's go to our noise consultant first to address. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, appreciate it. And Taylor, I'll come back to you in a second.
Kind of give a, give them a prompt. So we're just trying to, are we, are we, we just want to try to go over the possible concerns and then discuss how we understand they've been, you know, mitigated or anything that's an open action. You know, I think that, that, you know, the, our consultant ran through some of the points earlier, although they maybe did it a little quickly. And I think, you know, one of the things I heard was that with activities restricted such that everything is over by nine PM in the current plan, that takes us out of the realm of the after-nine o'clock standard, which was perhaps the most challenging standard to meet. And that's, that's the one that says, after nine o'clock, you can't have plainly audible noise inside your home with the doors and windows shut that's caused by a, a neighboring commercial establishment. And I think we also determine that in the Beacon Code itself, there's a definition of plainly audible, and it gives some, some examples and says, you know, you don't have to be able to discern the lyrics of the song, or you just, if you can hear it, you know, if you can hear the bass, then that counts as plainly audible. So that, I think it was, I think even in, in your colleagues' discussion, there was a recognition that's a pretty low-decibel standard. It may be something above a whisper.
If you don't mind, I like our profession.
Yeah, yeah, so, so maybe, so that's one, yeah, sorry, I'm, sorry, I'm gas bagging.
Step away from the mic for a second. Let's go to the professional.
Maybe we should hit that one first.
Yeah, okay.
So, so are you looking for me to synopsize all the noise issues and how they have been addressed?
Slowly.
Slowly, okay. First, the sound generated inside the facility.
Can everybody hear him, by the way? Okay. I'm sorry.
Am I clear enough?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just making sure the volume is good.
Sure, okay. So first of all, the sound generated inside the facility, sound level measurements were taken that demonstrated that it was likely compliant with the permissible sound level limits. However, that the, the, the bass, I'm presuming that was audible within the rectory, I think was where they did the initial analysis. So those were the first consultants hired, Beacon AV. They, it was recommended at the time that windows, acoustical panels be added to the windows of the church itself to the interior. That is a strategy, an acoustical remediation strategy that, that we have used. It, it is a, having a second pane of, of acoustical glass, interior air gapped properly, and there's a calculation for that. That, that, that is an effective strategy for reducing bass in particular. I've seen it work a number of times. The next, the question that I raised in my report was whether or not there was any openings directly from, for instance, if the front door of the church opened directly into, first of all, to the outside as well as into the, the event space. It was clarified that, no, there is a vestibule, and that, that is a significant attenuation factor, that the sound would have to go through two open doors or through an aperture into a large space and then through another aperture out into the open space, into the street. The doors that are on either side, to the north and to the south, those are ancillary doors that are accessed through smaller rooms. Again, it's unlikely that, that significant amounts of sound will, will come out. There was a, a long questioning about the sound, about whether or not there would be sound coming out of the, the doors could be propped open on the balcony that's going to, that's going to be constructed in the back. It was represented that that's an automatic door that opens and closes, that it was not going to be propped open for any period of time. The question was raised as to whether or not there was going to be any amplification of any sort or any events of any sort on that back deck. It was clarified that there would be no amplification in the events, that was for observation. It was not meant for, as in a, an ancillary event space. Then wanted to look at what the sound transmission would be to the south, to, to River Ridge. It was stated that there were some openings in that wall, the proposed new wall, that might have trellising. It was not clear as to whether or not that those were sealed or not. It was clarified that those were, were to be sealed or originally supposed to be sealed. There was a question that I raised about whether, how far to the, the west the, that wall extended, was it far enough that people at, at the edge of the balcony would, would have their line of, direct line of sight and sound consequently to the, to the residential, to, to River Ridge? Whether that would be broken? I was satisfied that they said, it wasn't clear on the, the plans. It was clarified in, in their response. There was a question about the equipment that was going to be under the deck. There was, there were openings there, again, that would have reduced the efficacy of that sound barrier towards River Ridge. That was addressed, that those, that those openings would be closed. Then we moved on to discussion of the, and, and Bubba, you've asked me to give you the longer version, so if it gets too long, let me know. You know, I unkeyed it first, and then if you want more, I'll give you more later. I then looked into the analysis of, of voices coming from the facility. Again, you've stated correctly that the, the regulatory standard is substantially different at night than it is during the day. So, they looked at, I requested that they do some analysis of the sound of people both at the front of the church congregating there as well as at the end of, near the street where there might be Uber's picking people up, that sort of thing. I, I did my own independent analysis. I believe that I used twenty people talking simultaneously in, in elevated voices, just short of shouting. And, you know, that would be forty conversations going on simultaneously. I think that was the number I used. And, and it, it was below fifty-five decibels at the property line of River, at the properties at River Ridge. It's, it's an even greater distance to the, to the residents in, at the, at the loft. There was a question about, now, understand that once those, that's a regulatory issue. There is the, you know, the, the secret issue of, you know, what happens off-site. That, that has not been analyzed. When these people walk out into the community and they're talking through the neighborhoods, that's another issue. There's been no specific analysis of that. It would be a difficult analysis to conduct. You would have to do, you'd have to determine what are the current levels at those locations and what would be the transient additional sound levels of, you know, you have to make some significant assumptions about the number of people passing a given point at any given time and at what level of vocal effort they are exerting at that time. That, the, the, that was not part of my analysis. It is something that the board may want to consider. Same thing with, 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 you know, off-site parking, you know, as people, well, it's all part and parcel of the same issue. You know, people off-site are not covered by the, the noise code. It, it is an off-site impact if, if it rises to the level where it's an issue. The question I raised also, I raised another question about loading and unloading on the property vehicles. It was stated that the loading would occur between the, between the church and the, the proposed hotel. If that is the case, and if it is, and if they adhere to that, the hotel, the, the facility, the church will be a significant barrier of transmission to loading noise to, to River Ridge, and the hotel will be a significant barrier for sound transmission to, to the West End Lofts. Additionally, that the, the church building, excuse me, the, the hotel building will serve as a, a sound barrier, an effective one, because it's tall and it's wide, to the voices, people exiting the, the, the event space to, to West End Lofts. The other properties were not considered because they are more distant. You know, it's a common practice in acoustical consulting to, to do calculations to the closest potential sensitized receptor. And then if, if that ends up being, if that ends up exceeding whatever objective standards of impact you're looking at, you might then see what is the total zone of impact and see what's the next furthest property, the next furthest property, and see what the total zone of impact is, the radius of impact. But on the other hand, if you find that there, that, that the impact does not exceed what the standards are at the closest receptor, then there is no particular reason to, to go to a more distant receptor. It's not that those were, properties were not considered. That was the criteria by which that an additional analysis was determined not to be necessary. Air handling on the roof was looked at of the, of the, of the hotel. It was suggested and accepted by the applicant that all rooftop equipment be surrounded by acoustical barriers that have extend a foot above the height of it so that it would, would shield anybody at the ground level from, from the sound emissions. They accepted that suggestion. What remained was the, the driveway, and I've already covered that to some extent. There is, the vehicle, vehicles traversing that driveway will exceed the permissible, the daytime permissible sound level limit at the side of the building, of, of the lofts. There are, a barrier or no barrier. You know, the barrier has limited efficacy to the first floor, even less efficacy to the second floor, and no efficacy to the third floor. That being said, though, vehicles that are currently traversing on that site are doing it with no remediation, and any other potential use of that site could also have vehicles that are emitting at the same sound levels. That's part of what a special permit involves is, it's my understanding, look, I'm not a lawyer and I don't play one on TV, but it's my understanding that it's a, is another use of this site that is permitted, would it be substantially more impactful? There are other, other uses for this site from the point of view of traffic that may have, that would have similar impact. So, that's, you know, in a nutshell, in a nutshell, that's, well, not in a nutshell, a rather big one.
Thank you.
That was my phone.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Hopefully to the public, all these, these things are available for you to see, but I'm going to try to take it a step further for everybody in a second. So I want to go around So I want to go around the board, if you don't mind, ask everyone to be very brief and specific, because I think we're going to, I'm going to ask a question of the board members with respect to this applicant, but let's go around the board if we don't mind, please start David.
What's the question, what's, what's the question you're asking?
No, just any comments or anything you want to state, anything specifically today.
Okay, um, I've spent far more time in Houston for related reasons. Again, I had some European colleagues in the car driving around and drove by Joel Osteen.
Use your mic if you don't mind, they can't hear you, thank you.
Joel Osteen's church, I mean, it's Grace Church, really big. Um, it, it did, it occurred to me that while this church is not really being used right now during his last use, it was a church, the allowable of, if Joel Osteen decided to open up Grace Church north, they could as a matter of right have a fairly impactful use. I mean, uh, for one thing, they could have higher occupancy than what we have here. I'm not saying it's definitive, but it certainly struck out to me.
Thank you.
It's been a long, a long journey with this project and it's evolved and, um, uh, I still have concerns and I, my concerns are, uh, pretty much reflect what the public has put into the record of, uh, of environmental impacts that would have changed their lives, that would, uh, reduce their appreciation and enjoyment of their, of their homes, their homeowners there. Um, one thing that I, I, when this area was rezoned, um, it was rezoned as a residential area and the, it was not zoned, this lot particularly was not zoned as a, uh, place of assembly, correct? It was not?
And, if I may, this is a specially permitted use, which means that it's a, it's, it's tantamount to a permitted use that meets the criteria of the special permit, it's the highest court near our court of appeals case we've submitted in our record, it's part of our application, I don't, I won't go in further, but it's a permitted use on the property. And it's also been determined by the building department to be a permitted use, specifically the conference center and event space. So they're permitted uses on the property, period. By special permit.
Okay, it's a little bit higher standard than, than as of right use, right?
It's a permitted use.
The permitted use?
So the city council has determined that this is a, it's a permitted use.
Jennifer, did you tap, see the button?
It's on now.
Her mic's not, it's not her fault, technical. There you go.
Is that better?
Can you hear now?
Okay. Can you hear me now? So a special permit use is one that has been determined by the city council to be a use permitted in the zone, provided it meets the special permit standards. So if an applicant demonstrates that they meet those standards, a special permit must be issued.
And those standards to be determined, right?
The standards in the code, the special use permit standards, not the conditions of a resolution.
But the permitted use is a hotel with an accessory use as a, as the, the assembly space?
Correct.
What everybody's talking about, right, is the church, right? That is, that is the main concern, right? And, and that also is the, the main, I think, um, it's the main reason why this project is going forward, right? It is its, it is its business intent, is its intent has a, um, and I think, uh, what, what's happened is that there's been a series of accommodations to make this happen, right, that have progressively, you know, addressed, as you say, you know, you've addressed the impacts in a, in a gradual way, it's taken a very long time, right? But, um, I, 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 I'm just saying that this project deserves a high level of scrutiny because of its impacts, it is the neighborhood and the, the, uh, the, uh, I don't feel that a major, which it is, you're not proposing what was originally done, but I think it might be difficult to, in the end, uh, avoid, uh, this becoming a, a, a larger project, uh, for a number of reasons, and, uh, I think we need to look at that very closely.
If I may just respond, Acting Chairman, just for new benef- benefits of the new members of the board, I know you've had a chance hopefully to look at, well, the material and I'm, I'm sure that was.
Please respond.
Where the act-
Right now, I'm sorry, but just please, we're not in, just, I got it, yeah, sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, the public, we hear you, right? What would make this process easier is not what you're doing now, because we understand the passion, but there's a process we have to follow. But he is resp- he's allowed, but he's was allowed to respond. As chairman, I can control that order for a specific reason. If you bear with me, I think you'll understand what I get to at the end, I think will help everybody find a balance.
Thank you, Acting Chairman, just for the benefit of the board members that are, have not been a part of this project too, the purpose of this use is to adaptively reuse a church. The idea is to preserve that church, to restore a cemetery that has been left untouched. There are, there's a component of this, it's an accessory use, the building department has made a determination that that use is permitted on the site, the conference and event space. That, that issue is not in question, that's not before this board, the use is permitted, the applicant is trying to do something in that space. They wanted to do it at the size and scale that was permitted for the existing church, which was over three hundred persons. The applicant has reduced the days to, there are no app, there are no events, were conferences Monday, Tuesdays or Wednesdays, Wednesdays at the site, there are only Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, holidays and holiday eves, which are even further limited. The total number of people have been limited to a hundred and fifty maximum on Friday, Saturday, Sundays, holidays and event eves, and a hundred and thirty on, uh, Thursdays. We've reduced those hours to a maximum hour of eight-thirty PM and seven-thirty PM on respective days. We've, we've controlled those hours. We can't do things outside of those hours. So the mitigation, I think, I wish Elliot was here, because I would say, you know, bare naked ladies request, I guess I gotta go to a concert with him, but it's all been done, but it's all been done for the benefit of the neighborhood. So one week, that's another bare naked ladies reference.
No, I was saying that, I was saying, you, you-
So effectively, we're, we're, and I, and I know Kevin, you, you mentioned that, so we're, we're, these mitigation measures are part of the secret consideration and, and I'll, I'll leave it at that, but I just want to make sure that it's clear that that church needs to be used for something or it would be raised. So the goal of this law is to encourage ren- maintaining these existing historic structures.
Two things you said, you said, you specifically said that the intent of this project was to renovate the building and preserve the cemetery. There's no work that's being proposed for the cemetery that I know of on any of these plans and there's only interior restoration work. You're not showing like shingle restoration or anything like that. So that kind of thing, I mean, that, that is, that is the long-term intent, but I would just keep it to exactly what you're proposing, I think.
Understood, and I will add one caveat, Acting Chairman, I, I will, I will close my mouth, but just again, for new members of the board, the state historic preservation office that reviews applications and their consistency for potential impacts of historic resources of which this church building is, have identified that this project will not have an impact on the historic character of the church or the property.
That's fine, I, I'm just saying that don't say things that, you know, I think we need to be careful, limit what our, what we're saying to what we're actually doing.
If, would I-
But I don't want to go back.
Understood, thank, thank you.
Let's avoid this part, thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
But we're going to get there, bear with me.
Just really, uh, really quick, the only thing I wanted, or two really quick things, just to, to put a complete closure on what our noise consultant was saying, the northern driveway, which seems to be the last open issue, I think our noise consultant just said that these kind of, you know, delivery trucks could exceed the fifty-five decibels of the property line, but does our noise consultant agree with the application of that HUD criterion to the interior of those residences such that while it would exceed the fifty-five decibels, it's not, uh, adversely impacting the residents?
Um, i- i- in fact, I was the one who brought it up in, in, in my analysis. I, I wanted to finally come to some sort of objective standard by which to make a, a determination of impact and it was in, in my, uh, April twenty-fifth report that I suggested that that be a useful standard to apply.
So, so we don't really have an open issue then on noise? Right, right now, we feel like pretty much everything is, is either been mitigated by operating hours or attenuated, but except, I guess, except for the one issue you talked about was off-site people traveling back to their cars and that's the one you said that would be very difficult to quantify, were there others?
Well, Actu, let me back up for just a second and say that the HUD standard is based on an, uh, LDN, which is a day-night sound level. And that, uh, applies a ten-decibel penalty for noises that occur, uh, in the evening. So, um, the statement that I made was that, you know, I just want you to know that, that it, it would meet the daytime limits, but if there was any significant traffic on that site, uh, uh, I think it's at ten o'clock, I think is when the LDN kicks in, uh, the, the ten-decibel penalty, then there, then there would be some questions about that.
So to, so to mitigate that impact, you'd have to prevent, you know, demobilization, loadout of bands or catering services after nine o'clock?
Uh, I'd say after, you know, if it, if we're still adhering to the LDN as, as the marker, um, then I believe that the, uh, it's ten o'clock, that the, that the, so loading at that site should be done by ten o'clock.
And then the, the only other thing I wanted to mention was that, uh, I was, I went, I wanted to go back and look at the environmental assessment form that was submitted back in July twenty-twenty-one and it's no longer, uh, relevant, some of the conditions. Can we get that updated? And feel free to, um, attach some narrative, maybe that goes beyond the space that's on the, you know, the two lines that are a lot of some of those questions to tie things into the, the proposed operational plans and-
Absolutely.
It would probably be helpful to have that reflect where we're at now compared to where we were.
Certainly, we can make that a supplemental EAF narrative, so to speak, it is, you know, for, for the record, it is part of our supplemental submissions, do that, but we can organize it.
Okay.
I don't know where to start. Um, I, I have been to some of the meetings when, you know, that you were part of as a private citizen and I, I don't, I don't know, you know, I'm, I'm really not up to where we are with this, it just seems like an, an, I don't even know, albatross or something, it's just this huge thing that keeps evolving and growing into something else and partners changing and it's just, it's just really confusing. And I understand what the people in the area are, are afraid of, you know, and that everything's going to change, uh, but things change, that's, you know, life is like that. But this is going to be a huge impact on a relatively quiet area, so I'm not sure where that fits in, like, what do we have to say about it?
So, um, not to get you up to that point, all right? I'm, I'm going, I'm going to-
Mm-hmm.
-try to find a balance, right? I try to do that sometimes, bear with me. Thanks everybody for the patience. Board members, I would like to just go around the board, I need a yes or no, I propose we have a open working session at the next planning board meeting that starts at seven o'clock, respectively where the applicant comes in and presents from nuts to bolts everything with respect to how this place will operate, just lay it out so we can get all those things off the table and we can understand and the public can understand what that is and what, what, how this will work within the community. I would also say at that time, it'll, during our working session, public, please bear with me, I'm going to have it, the comments closed to the public, but you will have a time to respond after we get to the working session, because I think what that will do is take whatever, unrespectively, and I'm, I don't mean it as a negative to either side, if there are any ambiguities inside of this or any questions of just summations, we should be able to get to a point of at least a balance. And from that balance, I think we can move forward from that balance, because we hear everybody. There are specific things that they have rights to do. And to a board member, uh, David's comment, if this was a situation where someone who came in with respect to that church usage, we would have less the ability to have these kind of comments. So that's what I would like to propose to the board, that we do that in the next, and John may want to kill me, but in the next, our next planning board meeting, you be prepared to present everything as if though we were, as if though I was a kindergartner-
Mm-hmm.
-and walk through the process. If there are questions that the public has with respect to that, hold them until we get through it, hopefully this will let us get out of the shadows and have an understanding of how this can work. Is that fair? Um, one second, I just want to go around the board first and I'll let you answer the question. Board members, are you good with that, is that?
Can I offer a helpful, that it-
Do, I want to answer that question first and then I'll let you off or whatever, are you good with that?
Okay.
Are we good?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion for that?
Motion to have a-
Open session.
Open session?
Starting, starting at-
A work, open work session at the beginning of our next meeting?
Starting at seven?
Mm-hmm.
We're going to go for an hour. That should allow them the ability to present it and note it, that way I also amend, I think we, I don't know, you know, how do we need to notate that so people understand what we're doing?
Yep, so we can, uh, notate, notate that on the agenda-
Okay.
...for the next meeting and any public hearing that gets scheduled for the next meeting, we'll just make sure that it's noticed for eight o'clock instead of seven.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Seconded, aye.
Aye, okay, got through that. Now, um, if I can go to the, yes, you had a question, I'm not ignoring you, I'm just trying to, come up to the mic, to the mic, identify yourself.
When the presentation is made, I'd like to make sure that it's in a form that we can all take a look at, easy to see, um, this doesn't necessarily work, so it would be somebody up front presenting.
And here we might-
Sure, we don't really hear you, some of you we do, some we don't, but, um, I mean, it's true, we don't really hear what you're saying sometimes, but somebody up here doing sort of a PowerPoint or, um, you know, you know what I'm saying. Seeing here and here and trying to figure it out, it doesn't work, you gotta be up in front, standing in front of everybody, saying, this is what we're proposing, this is what we've done. And there's been accommodations made and you've had these mitigating factors, which is very nice, but at the end of the day, we're looking at this project and we're saying, does it fit this neighborhood? Not from what we could do, not from where we've been and where we've come down to, but is what you're proposing today fit this community?
Well, remember, they have specific rights as owners to do certain things that are in-
Exactly.
So, do, I, we're not, this is not a debate, I'm just saying, I understand what you're saying, but that's why I'm trying to lay this out.
But isn't there a special use permit that says we have to-
This is what I'm trying to-
This is about the community agreeing to it.
We're collectively working towards that, okay?
Okay, so I, I don't want to be told it was three-eighty, it's one-eighty, it's one-fifty, this is where we are now. That's all I'm asking. That's it?
Randall, I'll just-
Yeah, please.
Typically, or traditionally work sessions-
I did that, Mike.
Is this not working now either?
Try the other, we have the-
Hello, hello?
There you go.
Um, traditionally, work sessions are much more informal-
Yeah.
-than what we're doing right now and typically, the applicant would actually be seated at the table with the board and I would envision, you know, the tables would be set up sort of in a, a round table format, it's usually a much more informal, obviously, it's within the discretion of the board and the board alone as to how you want to structure that work session, but that is typically what a work session would be, a much more informal, um, discussion.
I would like for it to be, and I'm sorry, John, I'd like for it to be in a manner, if we can use a smart board or whatever we need to use so everyone can see exactly what's happening, respectively, I think that would allow us at least a, a foundation. Yeah, but yet, come on.
I think it's important at Betty Wall, eight River Ridge, we're talking about a special permit at this point and we're talking about not ordinances, but impact on our community and that is one of the criteria for you issuing a special permit, this is going to have an impact. And I'm not as worried about the sound coming from the church as I'm worried about people leaving your event space and coming onto River Ridge's property, being on the borderline, coming into our actual development, there is no mechanism to stop that, it's never been discussed, it's never been, there's no plan for that and, and we're just vulnerable. We have residents, Caroline is sitting back there, she literally shares a front lawn with, um, this venue as well as six other units and I think the consultant said, I mean, he's talking about an ordinance, but once somebody is off their property and they can't stop somebody from coming onto our property, they can't control the noise.
Did just, sorry.
And also the festivals, you have to respond to that, please.
Do we, um, can we, is, is, Jennifer, is there something- Do we, can we, is, Jennifer, is there something, could you, like, in a nutshell, maybe just outline, like, we have these steps to go through for the secret process, and then if, if we get to the special use permit development, then there's an opportunity to create conditions. And then there's also this issue of, like, what happens if people behave illegally, like they trespass or do things and how, and I don't know that, you know, those are things that are ever contemplated being controlled by our actions, right? I mean, I'm just saying.
Yep, so first step is, first step is the secret process, which has been ongoing for a number of months since the application was, was first submitted. As part of the secret process for this unlisted action, your charge is to make a determination of significance, meaning a determination of whether the project may have a significant adverse environmental impact. If that's the case, you would issue a positive declaration, which triggers the preparation of environmental impact statement and ultimately a finding statement. The alternative is a determination that based on what the applicant has proposed, the quote-unquote "proposed" action, which includes all of the mitigation measures that we've heard about, whether that will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. If that's the case, you issue a negative declaration. Once secret is complete, that paves the way for you to make a final decision on the actual underlying application that's before you, which is for a special permit and site plan approval. The special permit is for the hotel use with the accessory, you know, conference center event space in the church. And then there's the site plan. The special use permit has with it a number of standards set forth in the zoning code. Those, there's general standards and specific standards that the applicant has to meet in order for you to issue that special use permit. In issuing a special use permit and site plan, as with all of your resolutions, you have conditions of approval. I would anticipate that in this particular resolution, there would be many conditions of approval, regulating the hours of operation, you know, noise, all of the operational issues that we've heard from the applicant on the parking management plan, all of those things, the signage, et cetera, all of those would be conditions of approval. Included in that, we've discussed this at prior meetings, that we can also have a mechanism whereby the applicant has to report back to the planning board periodically to verify that they are complying, they are continuing to comply with all the conditions of approval and continuing to meet all of the special permit standards. Beyond that, it becomes an enforcement issue for the building department, so for, or even the police department. So for example, if there is noise being generated from the property that goes beyond the code limits at, say, 11 o'clock at night, 12 o'clock at night, a resident could call the police department, because at that time, the building department's closed, Bruce is back at home, call the police department, and the police will respond. And there'll be a report, you know, a report made that a complaint was issued. And the building department can follow up, verify whether there's, you know, anything actionable there. Ultimately, violations can be issued. Violations are returnable in the city justice court, in the city court. They're criminal violations governed by the penal law, and those are violations of our code and of resolutions of approval. So there's a whole series of, of steps, starting with tonight, moving forward to secret, then moving for your final decision on the applications, conditions of approval, and then ultimately enforcement mechanisms.
Thanks.
Mr. Taylor?
If I had a million dollars. With that, I don't think there's anything else with our presentation for tonight. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to present to you at a work session. We will try and synthesize that information in this supplemental submission, similar to Mr. Warner's suggestion of the EAF narrative related to the noise mitigation, but we'll sort of shrink that into what the current proposal is. Not, you all know where it came from and where we brought it down to, but to help sort of frame that discussion, and the board might consider, and certainly your discussion with your counsel, some type of seeker consideration, you know, details that kind of be considered at the next meeting, so we can go through those factors with you all from the EAF Part Two that explain the different, whether it's community character, noise, sound, you know, all the things that are considered in that neg deck. So that might be something we could discuss at that next meeting if the board is prepared at that time to consider that kind of discussion.
And, and not just noise on the EAF, like, the EAF original says that the rectory is going to be raised, there's a lot of things that have just, have changed, no longer applicable. It would be good to get all of that updated.
Yeah, I think within the updated EAF, you can reflect that. Ladies and gentlemen, the public, all right, I see you, there was a young lady before you. What I'd, what I'd like to do is have that be the last comment, but not the last word, if you hear me. The reason I requested us doing this in an open working session, as the councilor told you, normally we don't have them open where the public can be participant, I want us, us, because I'm a member of the community as well, to be able to hear and see this, prepare questions specifically to where the gaps are, which will allow us to look at this with all the pieces and understand those elements that need to be super protected with respect to this for the community and everything we're talking about. We hear you. So last comment, but not the last word, because we have other applicants and things.
Okay. Just finish what I was going to say.
No, no, no.
Never.
Let's do it for next week. Oh, I just wanted to emphasize.
Again, Dawn Powell Manzo, Hammond Plaza. One thing that I would ask is, if we're getting an overview, if it can have intervals as opposed to going through an entire soup to nuts, if there can be intervals so we can digest one piece and discuss it and go to the next second?
It would be very difficult because we'd have to have only you on the agenda. It would be very, so that's why I want the presentation to be there, and then we'll have a public component to it in the comments with respect to that. If there are still elements of that, and again, I'm not doing it in any way to limit anything, I'm just trying to understand, get a process that we can go through. Because it seems that there are a lot of the elements of what they're doing that pretty much the public is pretty much aware of, I think they're hot points. And I think we need to address those respective hot points. If something comes up, absolutely. If it's, something looks different, then I don't mind that.
And again, I'm not implying that anything would be different. It's a matter when you're not a layperson or you don't know what the, the details are of something. By the time you get to the end, you don't know how to approach it in a way.
I understand. I totally understand.
And the variable, the variables that are involved.
As long as John doesn't kill me, we're a community, I think we can figure this out.
If John's on vacation, we might take up a little, you know, hat for him, stay just one more week. You know, again, no disrespect, but I do appreciate all of you with outside thinking right now, because I think that this could be something that's helpful.
Thank you.
So I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. So we're going to leave? Actually, I know you have to go, thank you, we're going to thank you. All right. Wonderful little girl, she's very patient. Tell them thank you from all of us. All right. Thank you. I think we need a motion to keep the public hearing open?
Yeah, yeah. Continue it to.
Motion to continue the public hearing into?
June? I can't believe it's June. Yeah, till your June meeting.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura. Can I get a second?
Which is June 11th, I think.
June 11th, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Thirteen.
Give me a second.
Oh, no. It was important, maybe if Taylor could come over here, we could try to do this in a very concise, bullet point way. It should be so important. We don't have to say how. If traffic, if there's a dead issue.
You know, just go. You're not in charge. Taylor, if you could, as respectfully, bullet point.
Yep.
I'm a kindergarten, I'm one at kindergarten.
Got it.
Thank you.
Actuary Chairman, Members of the Board, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Fader on behalf of the applicant. I am joined by our typical consulting team. As the chairman mentioned, I'm going to try and synthesize these points. It is a public hearing, it's our first one for this application, so I do need to at least give.
Let me read the hearing for number two.
Cool.
Let me read it.
I like it. Okay, got it.
We're moving on to item number two, public hearing on application for site plan approval, three-story retail commercial, 536 Main Street, submitted by HR SM LLC. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again, Actuary Chairman, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Fader on behalf of the applicant. As the chairman stated, we are before you for our site plan public hearing for a three-story commercial development at 536 Main Street. We did, for the record, notice the public hearing utilizing the signage and the mailings and publication requirements of the zoning code. This is our first hearing, so I am going to give just a quick synopsis for those in the public that may not have heard this presentation of new members of the board. We are existing vacant lot at 536 Main Street. We're in the CMS of the Central Main Street zoning district and the historic district landmark overlay district. There's an existing three-story, 14-unit building and a retail building located to the right, if you're looking at it from the street, and at 544 Main Street, and so it's set back between seven and 10 feet from the lot line. And there's an existing mixed-use building to the left that currently abuts the property. So the northeast corner of the site abuts the city's 21-space parking lot, Main Street for Plank, and it's just south of Melzingas. As the board is aware, the surrounding area includes commercial, residential, mixed uses, apartments, restaurants, personal services, establishments, hotels and events, spaces and other retail uses. The applicant is proposing to construct a dimensionally conforming, zoning compliant, 11,272 square, usable square foot building. REA will show briefly the visuals which are on the screen before you and go through the renderings. Again, the applicant is proposing a three-story commercial, no residential is proposed in this application. It is going to host the retail showroom for Warp &amp; Weft, a custom design rug curation business. Warp &amp; Weft offers high-quality internationally sourced rugs, inspired by Beagance artist community. We're proposing an architectural space where the company's rugs can be viewed and experienced more fully through the facade designs. We, again, is a commercial development, it will mesh with the fabric of the existing built environment around this property site. We would note, of course, the project is not a four-story proposal, it's not permitted to be, but we've incorporated elements that you would otherwise be required to do if you did propose such a project to that effect. We have a great landscaping program, again, using Deborah Adamson's. You know, our designer's been in communication, Mr. Clark was here, he would know that we were there, meeting with the city's tree advisory committee, and they have since signed off on our reduced, excuse me, on our proposed red bud tree, and she continues to meet with those design committee folks. The design also incorporates all the landscaping needs necessary for CMS zoning. Carlito Holt of Provident Design will address our parking and traffic analysis, but in our reports, as previously discussed with the board, there's no anticipated impacts via traffic or parking in the vicinity of the site. Procedurally, we are seeking only site plan approval, does not require any variances for the application, and we do not require city council review. It's a planning board specific review. The ARB Subcommittee seen this twice, first on March 3rd and then again April 28th, and provided you with a favorable recommendation for the application, and REA will briefly review those for the board. We are an unlisted action under secret, so tonight, I believe the board has a draft negative declaration, which we've reviewed, provided very minimal comments just about what use is proposed, which is the commercial use for the site. With that, I'll have REA quickly walk through the plans.
I mean, I think Taylor summarized the project, so I just wanted to let you know, we did meet again with the ARB Subcommittee and, and the applicant. We are proposing, you know, we have updated renderings, we have a new cornice design, which was sort of one of the main sticking points, you can see it in this rendering. But otherwise, it's sort of based on a typical Main Street building. The windows are, you know, have a more modern detail, but it's sort of a similar scale, similar layout to existing buildings. Same with the storefront, we're approaching it in a more modern way, but it, you know, basically lines up with storefronts on Main Street. And then from what I understand, the ARB Subcommittee was satisfied with the, you know, this latest rendering of it and is going to be recommending approval to the full board of the facade design. There's a question that came up, because we have on the right side of the building that you're looking at now, those four windows, we're going to have to work with Bruce to make sure that those are compliant, because they are on the lot line. So we'll work out the detail for that, and we'll make sure that it's a, either glass block or, you know, something that's.
It's going to have to be something fire-rated in order to maintain the integrity of that wall, you would be, you know, on the lot line itself.
Right.
Less than, less than three feet.
Right. And then there's a couple options, you know, we could do a glass block behind the glass.
Oh, yeah.
It's my accompaniment.
Taylor's glasses.
Or, or we could work out some kind of fire-rated window assembly, but we'll, we'll get that worked out and it won't change the look.
Okay.
Just on that point, we'd be also accepting a condition on the approval that says, should the adjoining property owner ever extend to their lot line, that, and that's sort of the purpose of this discussion, is that if the owner, to the right side on the screen you're seeing, ever were to so choose to build out their building, if they could, to make a party wall, then of course, we would not be entitled to party wall. And that, that project, when it was approved, specifically set themselves back from their lot line because they wanted to have windows on their, on their residential building. So that, and that was how that came to be. So they're set back for that purpose. With that, just quickly touch on the, if I may, Actuary Chairman, just Carlito Holt from Provident Design will just touch on the parking and the traffic, again, for the public.
Good evening, everyone. Carlito Holt with DTS Provident. We prepared a traffic and parking assessment that was dated revised through March 31st, 2023, which had incorporated any comments from the planner and the city's traffic consultant. Findings found that it's a very nominal traffic generator, it wouldn't even be noticeable as far as the amount of additional traffic you would see on the roadway. And then we also did a parking assessment to determine whether there was adequate parking within the 800-foot radius to support the parking demand, based upon operational information provided by the client. It's not anticipated that there would ever be a need for more than nine parking spaces. And the parking assessment found during peak times, there was 99 spaces available in the area surrounding the proposed project. And I believe the board actually wasn't a formal vote, but they did take favorable action towards approving the waiver that is allowed under the zoning district. So.
This is a public hearing. Is anybody here from the public for this applicant?
When are you going to stop giving these waivers for parking? That is a very busy section in that Main Street area, and you look at the picture and there's no parking striped out right in front of that building. Rugs, as far as I know, come in big trucks, and this is a design studio of rugs, so that will be multiple deliveries of whatever's up and coming for this showroom. So I'd like to talk about the elephant in the room, and putting up a steel I-beam is not anything that is of any architectural design detail, kind of looks like the flat one on the other end of town. Like I said, this is one of the busiest intersections on Main Street. We're talking about school crossing, coming and going every day, coming down Ver Plank Avenue, it's extremely busy. I'm not sure, and I've read all those letters that were submitted to the application about those poor people that will lose any light into those apartments that live next door. I think the foundation of all planning and design in our city is to make it easy to drive swiftly from one end of Main to the other, regardless of what hour of day. And most people do want to park close to the destination, so I see the delivery trucks there. And everyone knows that the seasons have changed, so will those new rug samples, and there's no public gain for this project. It's all about the person who owns that building. In any real great city, the beauty is in the architecture, and I just don't see much in here. And the public space is a prime part of what keeps us interested down there. It's, it's, I don't know that we have to fill every section with these cookie cutter buildings. I just hope, and I heard him say that he doesn't need any special anything, so it's pretty much probably a done deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public here for this? Just, Jen?
Should maybe the, the members that were present at the Architectural Review Subcommittee just talk a little bit about what you reviewed and what your comments were?
Yeah, this, this applicant.
Yeah, this, this application was from a client. Their business is doing modern design carpets, and they, the owner has a particular affection for the Dia and that type of minimalist art. So, one of the things he wanted to do was not imitate the traditional style, but work within the material and proportions and layout to make a minimalist facade that still worked with it. I was very, personally, very happy that that was, I thought, after apparently several iterations, it didn't work at first, and now I thought that it was actually a really good design, in my opinion. A lot of these things have to do with materials, and as far as, the good thing is that both the client and I thought the board was very happy with the result. The bad thing is that now REA has shown that he can do this kind of work, and his expectations are raised. But it's really nice. I had to-
I think that same architect did Dia, didn't he?
That'll come back.
So, we just have some cleanup comments that they need to address, and according to John Clark, he's got a few cleanup items that need to be addressed also with regards to this. He also notes the board and the applicant should discuss the need for rear fencing. Not exactly sure where he was going with that, so, speak to that one.
You can't even mind reading that for respect to John, so there wasn't really a GameStop or something?
No, I don't think so. I don't know if he was trying to prevent somebody coming down the hill to this, or leaving their open garden area out back. Doesn't-
Does it have to do with the retaining wall, though?
Well, there are retaining walls going in there. It could be, he didn't reference what it was-
Do you mind, Taylor, just communicate with John and find-
Yeah, we're certainly pleased that there's any site plan conditions-
Yeah.
-to achieve that. Again, this is just, we're at the secret process, if there are any conditions that come out of site plan, we're certainly-
Understood.
Just, I think there was one public comment via letter about, it was the adjacent resident who was concerned about, you know, the light being blocked into their space. Are we, is what we have here in terms of the build-out relatively consistent with, you know, kind of appropriate considerations for light and air?
I can highlight at least, your most recent application that dealt with that was 416 Main Street, and that dealt with the, sorry, yeah, 416 Main Street, where it dealt with the hotel, the Beacon Hotel, the historic building, and the setback that was required to maintain light and air for the existing hotel rooms was five feet. At no point, so the applicant that built that building, when it was reviewed by this board, set back their building no less than seven feet from the property line, so as to add additional space to preserve effectively light and air, so as to not have an application come in like, and put a party wall window, which would require closing of those windows. So, this application, the building that is adjacent to us, is no closer than seven feet at any point along our property line. So, they have between seven and ten and a half feet approximately of space.
I know I've been cautioned to talking about building department, but it does affect the location and zoning, and I know that in the work that I've done in New York City, this is maybe different in New York State, that it doesn't matter, if you're putting a window on a lot line, right, you have to, that has to be a lot line window, whether or not, you can't just put it there and say, oh, we'll block it up when, if and when it gets the adjacent owner. That's my understanding, but-
I think that's the, okay.
I think it's a different discussion.
So, all right, yeah, so New York City-
Different discussion?
We don't want to talk about New York City, because I've done some research lately, it was regarding another project.
Close it right up.
That's what arose this problem, was because the potential applicant for this next project that may come in argued the fact that, you know, they were able to build up on the property line, why couldn't they have windows that looked out over the adjacent building?
Right.
The building code says, no, with a party wall, as, you know, we discussed, or-
Right.
-you know, on the lot line. New York City has exceptions to that, and actually, I believe that the building owner needs to get an easement from the adjacent property-
That can happen, yeah.
...in order to do that in New York City, so, but the state doesn't recognize that.
Okay.
And I think importantly, just to Kevin's point, to play off the building inspector's comments, we had proposed no windows on our, on our wall, that was an architectural design element that was proposed, but we're, we agreed to, against our client's objection, we agreed to original initially, with some coaching, we incorporated those to, you know, to respond to the board's comments, but the window that we'll incorporate will be able or capable, if and ever necessary, I don't see this, we can't foresee the future, so they have the rights, if they do it, so be it, but our windows will address that, or if the board prefers, we'll take the windows out. But I don't think that's the preference.
Okay. So, what I wanted, I think we can close the public hearing now, Ken?
I think so. I guess there's nothing-
I don't think there's anything, no GameStop or something. Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor? All right.
Oh, shoot, I was supposed to keep track of that for Amanda. Who made the motion and who-
Kevin made the motion.
Kevin and Lynn, thank you.
Donna actually made the-
Say Donna, Kevin.
Donna made the motion.
She made the second.
Thank you.
Give me to the second by a second.
I'm going to give you a hammer. So, what's her-
So, you have, at your last meeting- At your last meeting, you directed secret documents to be prepared for your consideration at tonight's meeting, so you do have before you the EAF Part Two, that's been completed, and the Part Three with a negative declaration, so that was provided to the board in advance of the meeting, posted online for the public to review. There are a couple of, sort of, typos in the neg deck that'll be corrected, non-substantive edits, but with that, you can entertain a motion to adopt the negative declaration as crafted.
Can I have that motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you.
And that's, so that's all we can do for you.
That's it for tonight.
And then, you would direct a resolution to be prepared for the next meeting?
Yes. Have a motion to direct a resolution to be prepared for the next meeting?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, have a good night.
Do you guys want to say, "7 feet apart, that's the window to get in?"
Huh? Next, item three, continued review of application for subdivision, oh, yeah, continued review of application for subdivision approval, three-lot residential, forty-four Kent Street, submitted by Hardy Homes LLC.
Good evening. Mike Bodendorf, Hudson Land Design, for the applicant. I'm joined here by the applicants tonight. At last month's meeting, your board was author, or you authorized the attorney to prepare a resolution of approval, I believe that's been done, it was posted to the website. I can certainly go through the project if you would like.
Nope.
I don't think there's any remaining comments from the consultants, so I'll keep it as brief as can be.
Apology, any comments?
No.
Any comments from the second chair?
No, I was just going to say, you do have a draft resolution that was provided in advance of the meeting, and it's posted on the website, so-
Just a motion.
-if no further comments on the resolution, then you would just need a motion and a second to approve the resolution as drafted. For forty-four Kent, the three-lot subdivision, you had the public hearing last meeting.
Can I have that motion?
Yep.
Motion.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item four, continued review of application for site plan approval subdivision, lot merger approval, mixed-use commercial and residential, one fifty-two, one fifty-eight, Fischel Avenue, submitted by one fifty-two, one fifty-eight, Fischel LLC.
Acting Chairman, Members of the Board, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Federer, on behalf of the applicant, I'm joined by our project architect, Jaclyn Tyler, and I'm also joined by Mike Morgante of Argon Consulting Engineering, and the applicants are also joining us. As the chair just mentioned, we are before you for our continued review of the application, we're not quite at the public hearing yet for this application for sixteen total units, it's mixed-use with office. As we submitted in our April twenty-fifth letter, and Jaclyn will touch on briefly, we had explored additional options for the location of the entrance to the proposed structure on the Fischel frontage, that's been the biggest discussion with the board, and we've been trying to incorporate that into our design, ADA compliant access and all that, to ensure that we're really driving home this application, really the first in the transitional district. This will allow for a centrally-located entrance on Fischel Avenue. I think Jaclyn was just trying to plug in the adapter, see if I can borrow another minute here. We did also reduce the number of steps in other access to the site. In addition, we had a bench seating area incorporated, and we also will be submitting to you all a landscape designed by Deborah Adamson. The applicant also appeared most recently at your ARB subcommittee meeting, and we discussed these proposed changes. We just recently received a determination from the building inspector with respect to our reduced building height, another comment from the board related to our building height, we have reduced the building height, we haven't quite got, we didn't dig the hole just far enough. Now, now, I know eight inches is a big deal in some respects, but in this instance, that's where we're about eight or nine inches. So, to that effect, we're, we, our position is that we were at thirty-four, thirty-four feet, three-point-five inches, but we're just over thirty-five, thirty-eight, thirty-five and change. So, we have brought that down from about thirty-seven feet to closer to, to under thirty-six feet. Additionally, based on the adjustments to the parking areas, we've been able to modify the retaining wall to tier it, so that it has better visual and aesthetics in the area, and that also works with our discussion with the board to date with respect to parking reductions, because it was really an overparked site, based on our traffic study and analysis. We're, part of our goal tonight, hopefully, is to come up with an idea of, possibly a discussion maybe for the next meeting, about referring us to the zoning board, now that we have our determination from the building inspector, we're not asking, since that came in today, for you to do that tonight, but it might be something we could consider discussing with council about setting up for next meeting, or a recommendation, so to speak, and referral to the zoning board, and of course, you know, so we're getting closer to the secret discussion as well with respect to the application. So, with that, understanding it's been a long night, I'll turn it to Jaclyn to just highlight the changes to the frontage.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jaclyn Tyler with Nexus Creative. I'm going to let Mike speak on this as well, based on the grading that we are able to accomplish at the front of the building along Fischel Avenue. Before you, you do have two different schemes, one shown at the center with a switchback ramp, and one location on the right-hand side. Since submitting this, we, we were able to work out some, an additional option. I'm going to demonstrate a rendering, I want everybody to ignore the architecture itself, given the fact that we are in front of the Architectural Review Board Subcommittee, and this is just for the purposes of understanding what will happen with the grading and the front ramp. So, we were able to incorporate a five percent ramp along the front, we will be able to avoid railings, et cetera, so it will be built into the landscape itself, along with landscaping elements positioned around that, in order to hide the front portion of that. And Mike, and I'll let him speak to this, he was able to work out the grading, along with dropping the lobby along Fischel Avenue, so you'll have, I think it's a total of six risers along the front there, and I think that meets the board's requirements in regards to what you were looking in order to re-energize the street level, in that we weren't going up a large hundred-foot-long ramp, and the fact that we're able to incorporate into the grading, we think is successful. Going to go back to the civil drawings, and Mike can speak on that. We are, we did have one meeting with the Architectural Subcommittee, two Fridays ago, not this past Friday, the Friday before, I believe. We are going to be revising the architecture, looking to incorporate some elements at the roof, and then we'll be back meeting with the Subcommittee to discuss those changes.
Thank you, Jaclyn, for the record. My name is Michael Morgante, I am the project engineer for this application that's before the board, and I'll just give you a brief summary of some of the changes that were made to the site plan, to allow the board to get a better understanding of what's been accomplished. So, we've essentially lowered the building height approximately two and a half feet, the building height and the parking in the rear. I believe we're at about one fifty-three-point-five, in our last submitted, we're at one fifty-one right now for our first floor elevation. We've also shortened the driveway aisle to the rear of the building from twenty-six feet to twenty-four feet, which allowed us to push the building a little bit further back into the site, and take advantage of a little bit more of the grade change between the front of the building and the existing sidewalk along Fischel Avenue. We took a look, as Jaclyn had mentioned, at two options on the site plan, and since then, what we've developed is a sidewalk that would start near the front right side of the building, and ultimately find its way roughly to the middle of the building. We believe we have enough length there and elevation change in order to meet ADA requirements for running slope, and we will have alternately steps that come in from the existing sidewalk along Fischel, up to the front of the building with a covered entrance. We've also coordinated, almost done coordinating our drawings with the Fischel Avenue Rehabilitation Project, we've got a lot of utility work and roadwork that's going on in front of this building, that's now shown on the plans, so we've got some elevations of existing drain structures, and even those, it'll be proposed as a part of the rehabilitation project, which further encourages us that when we prepare our stormwater management plan in the rear of the site, which will most likely be some type of stormwear, subsurface infiltration, we should have enough elevation change to connect to the existing infrastructure on the front of Fischel Avenue, and design an appropriate stormwater management system. I think that's, and we've also provided tier retaining walls, as you can see, in the northeast corner of the site, and we've also provided one in the rear central portion of the site. I think it adds a nice architectural feature to the, to the project. It allows us to put the refuse in a better, much better location for garbage pickup and management, and it also allows us to construct a nice loading area just to the south of that, for deliveries and loadings for, for the particular project. So, that pretty much summarizes the changes that were made to the plan. We feel that we're close enough right now that we're inches away from accomplishing, I think, what we need to do in terms of the site plan bulk requirements, so we'll continue to slice and dice this a little bit, and continue to bring the plan into compliance.
Thank you, appreciate it. That's it, you guys are done? Any substantial comments from around the board?
You know, I have one thing I wanted to comment on. There's a lot of effort, there's a lot of trouble that's being taken negotiating this great difference between the sidewalk and the entrance to the building, and I still, I walked by there, and you were told, I was told, we were told that it's five or six feet till to rock in this area, right, excavation, something like that, right?
So, what I can do is, I can tell you where we did soil testing.
I don't need all the details, my point is, because I don't want to drag this out too much, is that I don't understand why you don't want to just have this building one-graved with the sidewalk, or, so that it, you can do retail rather than back office, right? You get a much higher rental for it.
Yeah.
If you extend Main Street, Main Street commercial rentals are much higher, they are, than they are for suburban, small suburban office buildings, and you have the opportunity here to both extend Main Street, right, and have that higher value, and, so, maybe, maybe there's something I don't understand, I just have a question, why, why are making this not typical of Main Street?
So-
Let me just take you, so, just by way of update, for, it, just, we are not in the scene, this project, unlike the last application, is in the, this is in the transitional, the former planned parking district, so the transitional district only permits office, retail's not permitted. So, it's not an extension of Main Street, it's intended to be a transition, the project is designed to transition Main Street to the residential communities in the area. So, the project has been specifically designed to try and be that transition. Obviously, we're in close proximity to Hamilton Fish Plaza, the affordable housing development, and other multifamily uses in the area, of course, also commercial Salvation Army, we have a number of, and we're directly across from the gas station, right, the alleyway that goes behind the site, bodega on the corner, so we're, a confluence of a lot of uses.
But even with that, and I guess, okay, so it's a retail that's not-
Yeah, this is one, actually, one opportunity, I wish John was here, because John, I never really get to be on John's team, I'm always sort of working with, sort of swimming upstream, I'm that trout going to get there, but, but John has, has, has said before, and I think he would say again, and has really incorporated into his comments to this board, that this application and the design of the building, the way that it's, it's driven, is, is how the code effectively created this, this building design. I mean, respectfully, obviously- I mean, respectfully, obviously, the architect designed it, but it is a reflection of the code's requirements, and it's a zoning compliant building, and it's also below, it also does not include all of the density that's permitted on the site.
No, my point is just, why, why would you limit this expense and this visual noise, and, and just, even if it is office, just enter on the sidewalk level? Don't put a ramp in there. Don't put stairs in at all. It's like a foot and a half. You also don't have the height, the eighth inch, eight inches, you're too high.
Understood, I understand the comments, and I...
I'm just asking why that, it seems, it seems like you're missing an opportunity, and I don't think the code requires you to elevate the building.
So, as it relates to building elevation, so as you had alluded to in the beginning of your conversation, we do have some rock ledge here now. In the area where I am proposing my stormwater system, we have fairly deep soils, but we don't want to drop this building any more than it is currently right now, because my stormwater system will probably sit five to six feet below the pavement. And then I probably have about another three or four feet from that point to get or tie into the storm, the existing stormwater system that's in the road, which is marginal at best. So, from that perspective, it's really difficult for me to want to lower this site any more than I already have. The other thing to consider is that we already have approximately a twenty-foot retaining wall on the back. I lower this site anymore, with twenty-three, twenty-two feet, so we're trading off for some, some higher retaining walls and larger variances in the back as a result of trying to make some of those accommodations. But, from simply a stormwater management standpoint, I, I'm not encouraged to want to lower this site anymore.
Okay, that's an explanation. That's fine. It just did not make any sense to me.
Let's go to John Russo.
So, Mike, you said you've done some soil testing, but the plans didn't indicate to me where you were looking at stormwater. Actually, no, I just noticed it, so it's over in that back corner.
Yeah, the, we didn't have a chance at this point yet to put the stormwater test results on the plans, but I did sketch in the area where we are looking to propose it, and the, the results were, were taken in that area.
Okay, so you noted that the rock's about four foot deep. I'm actually looking for some soil testing over in the area where we've got these retaining walls proposed.
Yep. Agreed. We'll, we'll do that. That's under problem.
That's where my main concern is, as far as what you're going to be hitting in that area.
I saw that comment, take no exception. We'll, we'll do some more soil testing out around the property line in that area to get an idea for what rock ledge looks like.
Okay. There are a number of comments that I have that are still from the previous, that they're in the process of addressing. They know, they've acknowledged that they will be submitting answers and responses to these in future submissions. So, that's all I have at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I think tonight, we were here just for these threshold issues of the, the entrance coming into the front and whatnot, and building height, and it seems like we've gotten to a point where like, we're very close, and we feel confident that we'll be able to, to meet the requirements.
Okay, good. I think the board may weigh, may want to weigh in, as far as the entrances go, which alternative they may feel more comfortable seeing as this project progresses, because this seems to be the holdup on this project at this point.
It's what makes it not fit into the city's formal pattern, you know? The fact that it's, it's built like a suburban office building with that entrance and all that other stuff. And it's, it may be allowed by the code, but I don't think it's necessarily, it's certainly not required.
We appreciate the comment. Again, this is, this building is designed to transition from Main Street to the residential community. So, we're trying to accommodate, again, important comments by Mr. Clark about ADA accessibility. While we had made the converse argument that we do have ADA around the building, we're really trying to make sure that it's aesthetically pleasing by incorporating landscape design, which is not on our plans yet. That's being incorporated with Deborah. All of those things will much better emphasize the value, you know, as we've highlighted, no rails, things like that, trying to make this, you know, rather than sticking it right up to the street and calling it a day, it's, it's trying to do all right by this area, and really help transition an area that is, right now, a gas station. That's the corner, right? This is an alleyway behind the building. You know, these are things that we're trying to improve. We're trying to, to really make a transition from what is there, and to be consistent with that area. We're also not in a historic district. We're not having any impacts there, so all, all unique to the characterizations of this application, as distinct from other applications before your board.
More to see, more to understand. Thank you.
Thanks. With that, I think for now, only, if I may, Chairman, is if we might consider discussing for next month, the ability to have a referral, to discuss recommendations, to be discussed, I guess, at the June meeting, about the, right now, eight or so inches of building height, and the retaining wall. Because that would be part of the, part of the next step. We are an uncoordinated, or we are coordinated review in SEACRA, so the zoning board won't be able to act, whether it's one variance or two, but hopefully, we'll, I think we're getting, you know, as Mr. Morgante mentioned, quite close on, on what those variances will be. So, that might be something we discuss at the June meeting.
Yeah, I, I think that's exactly something to discuss at the June meeting. I think it's premature to refer to the zoning board for the variances now, before we've got, you know, exactly what variances are needed, buttoned up. Typically, you would refer to the zoning board once you complete your SEACRA review. If the applicant wants to take an early tour to the zoning board, as we're getting closer to completing SEACRA, maybe at the meeting that you direct preparation of SEACRA documents for the next meeting, you can also refer to the zoning board at that time. But I think it's, it's important to get the variances buttoned up first, yeah.
Would this, at this point, still be like a self-created hardship with the eight inches?
Self-created hard, it, it, sure.
Right? Like, they could just make it lower. It's not...
Possibly, but, yeah, I mean, but for area, so if you're talking about self-created hardship with respect to an area variance standard, and the fifth factor of the self-created hardship, it's, it's not determinative, and that's for the zoning board to weigh and consider. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, see you. Next one.
Thank you very much.
All right. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, continued review of application of concept plan approval, Beacon Hip Loft and Studios, Front Street, submitted by Beacon Hip Loft LLC, and referred to planning board, okay, by City Council. This was referred to us by the City Council.
Right, so this is the concept plan that the City Council has approval authority for, and then once the concept plan is approved, it will come to you for, for site plan review, but you're serving as lead agency for SEACRA.
Is this thing working?
We're going to have to get you one of your own.
Ah, yeah. So, we, we submitted revised drawings, based on the comments we received at the last meeting. Basically, we removed the chain link fence between the properties along Front Street. We updated the access road configuration along Front Street, and I'm here with Mike Bodendorf, and he can talk in more detail about that, if there's any questions about it. We showed site lighting on the plan, on the landscape plan now, and updated some of the landscape design. So, that, that's basically where we are from the last meeting.
So, you, you, so we're looking with the, Chen, this one, I see, the positive referral back to the City Council, respect to this.
Yeah, so I think you probably want to hear from, from John Russo and his comments, but ultimately, we may be in a position to direct SEACRA documents for your next meeting, along with a recommendation back to the City Council for consideration at your next meeting.
Okay, John.
So, the applicant has been working, moving forwards with getting information that's necessary for the water, the sewer utilities, the layout, meeting with the Building Department, the Fire Chief. They are in the process of hiring somebody to do an evaluation of the existing force main that runs from the pump station up to Liberty Street. So, they are making progress. As far as the front access aisle in the front parking lot, it's required to be twenty-six foot in width for aerial apparatus access in accordance with the fire code. Scaling it right now, it doesn't mean twenty-six. It's only about twenty-five, twenty-five.
That's on me.
I like to put on. So, I don't know what that's going to impact, the six inches, it shouldn't impact much there, but, so they are working on all the comments that we have. We were asking for some cleanup on some items to be done. They still are gathering additional information for the water and sewer engineers report, but they have provided sufficient information, engineering-wise, to, I believe, progress them back to the City Council.
Anything you said regarding the SEACRA? Anything that...
No, not, not at this point.
And, and we will be back in, in front of the planning board once the City Council issues its determination for site plan review.
Okay, so just going around the board real quick, is there any reason we see here with respect to a positive recommendation back to the City Council, based on all the things that we've done to this point?
My concerns were about its location in the flood zone, and that it, that the uses and the design, that anything that affected our approval as a concept, right, was that we had a certain understanding, or a certain enough understanding, that this was compliant, and it wasn't a potential, potentially dangerous or non-compliant situation with the flood hazard regulations, right?
Yes, and they are. They've actually elevated the first floor of this building two feet higher than the flood plain in that area, which is required. They are out of the floodway. They may be within the hundred-year floodplain, but we went through this, that they're not increasing any flows or backup in the area, and therefore, it is allowable.
And, and the stormwater retention pond is compliant with its current elevation, okay?
I don't have any questions right now.
So, can I get a motion to make a positive recommendation back to City Council? Is that the correct one?
Yeah, and they're not going to be able to do anything with that until they get the SEACRA documents after your next meeting. So, you can act on that now, the positive recommendation, or wait until your next meeting, when you're doing your SEACRA.
How do you feel?
I'd prefer to wait if we can, if we can really do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
So...
Prefer to wait?
Okay, so then you'd need a motion to direct preparation of the SEACRA documents for your next meeting.
Can I have a motion for preparation of SEACRA documents for next meeting?
Yeah, motion to prepare SEACRA documents for the next meeting.
Can I have a second?
A second.
All in, oh, sorry. No, no, no problem. It's all good. Yeah, well, all in favor? I, that's not a problem.
Shoot, that was Kevin and Donna?
Kevin and Lynn. As a motion, Kevin with a second.
Okay, sorry.
All in favor. All right, thanks for that.
I'm not doing Amanda's job very well.
All right, she's going to ask you.
Give her respect.
Too many things to keep track of.
Next one's you two?
Yes.
Review of application for site plan amendment, 511 Fishkill Avenue, submitted by Diamond Properties.
Okay, so, all right. So, yeah, so the properties at 511 Fishkill Avenue, it's where Industrial Arts and District Social are located, and the applicant is the property owner, and, and they also run District Social. So, basically, the application is to amend the site plan that you have looked at a couple times and approved a couple of years ago, and what, what they want to do is add food service containers in the front of the building. There's one for District Social, and there's one for Industrial Arts, and, and they're separately operated, but that, that's essentially what the application is. John, I did get more information from the owner about the utility hookup, so I'll, I'll make sure that all that is on the drawings for the next submission.
Yeah, my biggest concern was sewer.
Yeah.
Where that was going, and how it was even, and the other concern I had is, you know, here it is proposed, and yet the plans are saying they're existing, which...
Yeah, I, I think they're catching up on some of this. I, I think originally there was a food truck.
Bruce explained that earlier, that this, I explained it earlier. Yeah, so the, the water drainage, gas, they noted, I think you noted, gas was going to them also?
Yeah, yeah, and, and I got all the sizing and locations of those connections.
Okay, and how the wastewater is going to be handled, the proposed fencing and dimensions on Sheet Three, got darkened them, completely lost in the hatch. I mean, you keep looking at the computers, you get started looking at what you print out when you submit. What are the hours of operations proposed for these containers, you know, that should be put on the plans?
Yeah, I, I got that answer from the, from the applicant as well.
Kind of concerned if that starts going at night. You do have residents right across the road to the one side there. Is there any screening proposed, kind of hide them, soften them, landscape-wise?
They said, when, when I spoke to them about that, they, they weren't planning on it, but they are willing to do that, if that's something the board thinks would improve the situation there.
And then as far as them being ADA accessible? How, I mean, because I know the one is set in an island, so there's a curve to deal with. The other one, you're dealing with pea growl surface.
Okay.
That's, that's all I have.
Okay, yeah, and then we have comments from John Clark, too. So, we'll, we'll address that for the next one.
Yeah, we got a lot more to do.
Yep.
I know if anybody has specific comments, but there's a lot more stuff that's got to come for us.
And one comment that John Clark and I had in common was the existing condition survey.
Yeah.
Bring it present, yeah. I can tell you took an old plan from somewhere, isn't it? Really update it to show what's really there, because there are a lot of questions as far as that, even as far as landscaping and parking.
Right, okay.
Got that one?
Yeah.
Good. Next one's you two?
No.
I'm sorry, I appreciate it.
All right, have a good night, thank you.
You too now, thank you very much. We're going to Item Seven, Review of Application for Site Plan Approval and Special Use Permit, Personal Wireless Service Facility, 375 Washington Avenue, submitted by Verizon Wireless of the East LP.
So, good evening. Scott Olson from Young Summer, out of Albany, New York. I'm here to represent Verizon Wireless.
Don't fall.
Oh, so, I won't. So, we're looking to put a new cell tower at the Fairview Cemetery. It's kind of in a northern part of the property. It's a hundred-and-twenty-foot tower, so we're under your height limitation of one-fifty in your code, and it'll be within a fifty-foot-by-fifty-foot secure compound. Before we proposed the new tower, we did look at the city water tank on Helen Court, but it was just too low. It doesn't provide the service that we need. And we need service and capacity, so we have, as you know, we've got sites within the area. The use just continues to explode, and we continue to need new sites, you know, not only in this city, but in municipalities across the state, basically. The site has been, and at least has been approved by the Division of Cemeteries. That was a requirement under the Not-for-Profit Corporation law. They did that in March, so that is all set. We know, you know, we've got comments from John, both Johns, and we'll provide written responses to those. The biggest, I, I think the biggest comment is obviously the visual analysis, and we always, well, we generally do not provide that with the application, because a lot of municipalities want to be part of that process, and so we want to offer that opportunity. You know, we'll provide a list of locations that we think are relevant, and I don't know if, you know, John, or both you, John and John, want to review that with the board.
Yeah, I think the board should definitely be involved as to where, and they may have some ideas tonight.
Yeah, so what we do typically is we, and we did it, we have it in the application, it's kind of like a preview, it's Exhibit Ten, and they, basically, there are these, what we call a desktop view shed, and the first one, the, the red area that you kind of see is the area that, it'll be blocked from. You won't see the tower. That's based just on topography alone. Then when we do the topography and vegetation analysis, so topography is blocked, that's the red color, the yellow color is blocked by vegetation, and that shows you that visibility of this, because of topography and vegetation, is very limited, but we will then confirm that with the balloon test and visual simulation. So, we'll use this to come up with a bunch of locations. So, we'll use this to come up with a bunch of locations to look at. We'll make sure we look at historical properties, park properties, all visually sensitive receptors. Obviously, we look forward to the board's input also. That is, in a nutshell, what we're looking to do. That's a true nutshell, too, by the way. I've heard other nutshells tonight. They were not nutshells. I'm sorry. Are we kidding?
The other thing I think the board should consider is bringing on an RF engineer.
Yeah, definitely. She definitely...
Yeah, no, I was just going to agree with Mr. Russo's recommendation. So, one of, there's two motions that I think that you should consider for tonight. One would be to circulate your notice of intent to declare lead agency as your first step for SECRE on this one last action.
Can I have that motion?
Yeah. Motion to declare lead agency for SECRE?
To circulate notice of intent.
Or, sorry, circulate notice of intent to declare lead agency for SECRE.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second, following up on what Mr. Russo said, is to retain an RF consultant to assist you with review of the application. I think also, in addition to an RF consultant, probably a consultant that's a little bit more expansive than that, that could also advise you on the visual assessment and other aspects of the application as well.
Can I have that motion?
Motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was Donna second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, does the, does the board have consultancy using it? Some of the ones I've done recently were smaller cells. They're not...
Yeah, I'm trying to recall. I don't remember the last time we had one where we needed a consultant. I know that the consultant that my office typically works with is no longer doing wireless work, Mike Musso with HGR.
The last one we did was the housing units over here.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, okay, yeah.
That was Musso.
Was that Musso?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, I'm told he's phasing out, but I still, I don't think he's phased out just yet, but I don't know if he's taking new work.
Yeah.
I mean, I can, I can offer some people that work for municipalities, only that I've come across, if you'd like.
Yeah, between my office and John's office, we're going to reach out to some, but yeah, we can, if you have some names, we're happy to take those and throw them to the mix and get some proposals.
And just process-wise, so we'll get you that list of locations as soon as we can. Is that something that will be decided at the next meeting, or is it something that gets done kind of offline?
I think because the board should have input, it probably should be done at the next meeting rather than being offline.
Okay.
I mean, the sooner you get it submitted, I'm sure it can get circulated, so the board can start thinking about it, so...
At the next meeting.
I will, you guys meet twice?
Once a month, second Tuesday of the month.
Okay. We'll get it submitted as soon as we can so that we hopefully have it to you well in advance of the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a nice night.
You too now.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Good meeting.